Good morning. Welcome to the November 13, 2020-21 Meeting of the Arlington County Board. We have Board Member Garvey, Board Member Karantounas, Board Member Dorsey, Vice Chair Cristel, and I'm your chair for a little longer, Matt DiFranti. And first, I just want to note a couple of things. We said it a little earlier this week, but I think it bears brief repeating. Congratulations to Mr. Karantounas for his reelection. And I want to also just note it was a busy week in the life of our community. We had Veterans Day. We have also mindful that there have been a couple of traffic fatalities over the last two weeks. And then lastly, our children are starting to get vaccinated in larger and larger numbers. And so we're grateful for that. So plenty on the docket in life outside this room. And this morning, we also have a number of items, starting with public comment. Thank you for joining us here in the boardroom, those of you who did, as well as remotely, if you're here virtually through Microsoft Teams. I have just a few announcements before we get underway with the public comment period regarding logistics. For those here in the boardroom, we ask that you wear a mask. If you are unable to maintain a six-foot distance from others, you'll notice that we're six feet at least apart. And when we're not speaking, and some, even when we are, for caution, are keeping their masks on when we're listening, for sure. You can view and hear the meeting from the conference room right across the hall, and that's overflow space if we need it. Just remember to come back in this room when it's your turn to speak. Board members and our senior staff have all been vaccinated, but we're taking that caution that I just mentioned with respect to social distancing and will wear masks when distancing is not possible. Some members of the public county staff and other presenters are participating remotely. We're offering this hybrid meeting model. For those in-person speakers, you are welcome to remove your mask when it is your turn to speak at the podium right here. The podium height can be adjusted by using the up and down arrow buttons on this side, on the right side, as you face the board. Please speak clearly into the microphone so that everyone can hear your comments. If you are submitting documents as part of your testimony, please hand them to the clerk with your name and contact information on all documents. For remote speakers, please keep your microphones muted and your cameras off until you are called on to speak. You will need to unmute yourself using Star Six if you're on the phone, or by clicking the microphone button on the toolbar if you're using Teams on an app or browser. After speaking virtually, you may exit the call and continue to participate in the meeting via the live on-stream or cable channels Comcast 25 and 1085, Verizon Files, Channels 39 and 40. A Spanish-language interpreter, I believe, is on the line for the public comment period portion of the meeting only and can help with individual translation. Could our interpreter introduce themselves in English and in Spanish, please?
You're muted. Sherlyn, you're muted.
We'll just take a second to give you the opportunity to unmute. And go ahead and keep testing. And when you are able to unmute, you can go ahead and jump in. I'll just finish two last announcements. Occasionally, we may need to get up and stretch our legs in the back. There are speakers and monitors so that we can continue to see and hear the meeting while we are there. Is our Spanish interpreter there?
Right now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Sherlyn Varela, Spanish interpreter. Good morning. Buenos dias, Sherlyn Varela, interprete en español. Si necesitan ayuda, déjenmelo saber. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias, and welcome. Thanks very much. So if you need Spanish interpretation, please come up and mention it to our clerk. Si quieres español, acá, por favor. So with that, we are ready to hear from our public comment speakers. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first two public comment speakers?
Yes, our first speaker is Evangelia Ririz, followed by Nicole Merling.
Ms. Ririz.
Hello. My name is Evangelia Ririz, and I would like to talk about the future of policing in Arlington. I sit before you to ask a question. What is the purpose of the police? Are they there to prevent crime, to stop it, to punish those who have committed a crime, or to reform them? Honestly, I don't think the ACPD does any of those things. I think what the ACPD does do is enforce a deeply racist system that hurts communities of color. This is not a problem that's unique to Arlington, but the fact is that the Arlington government has not done enough to try and rectify the harm that is perpetuated by the policing system. In the 2021 budget, Arlington will spend $119 million just between the police and the sheriff's office. With that $119 million, we could house every homeless person in Arlington for a year and still have $117 million left. We're fortunate enough to be a county with the resources to provide for those who are in positions where they cannot. I don't want to discount the work and the money that Arlington has put in to try and meeting the basic needs of Arlingtonians, but a part of living and loving this county is wanting to see it change for the better. And I believe that it is impossible for the police to exist the scale that they do and to see a future where Arlington is truly meeting everyone's needs. Defunding the police would not just remove money from the police and do nothing with it. With that $119 million I mentioned before, we could put the money into social services that would provide a more meaningful effect onto people's lives. Contrary to the rhetoric that circulates on mainstream media and the internet, defunding the police would not create all-out anarchy or make Arlington a lawless county of crime. It will likely do the opposite. Providing a safe environment where people's basic needs are met is the most effective way to reduce crime. I was born and raised here, and I want to see an Arlington where we protect and serve fellow Arlingtonians without the use of police. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ririz. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Nicole Merling, followed by Jane Green.
Ms. Merling.
Thank you. Good morning, Charity DiFranti and members of the county board. I'd like to bring to your attention two items that don't fit into any ongoing planning process, so I'll address them here today. First is ADA accessibility to early voting. While volunteering outside of the county building, I noticed dozens of elderly and disabled voters per shift struggling to get down the stairs to get from the parking lot because many disabled and elderly need to drive by way of the shortest path to early voting, which is the AMC building. While this is not your building, it is adjacent and has the same owner. I would suggest working on ramp accessibility to that entrance in any renewed lease agreement. Seeing so many people struggle to get to the polls was sad, and I know we can do better. Second is public use of school parks and fields. Pre-pandemic, the public could use places like the WNL track unless there were after-school games going on. Now, the field use is closed to the public from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., leaving no daylight time to the public to use track space. It would be disingenuous to continue to call this public space if these restrictions continue. This is in your court because what used to be public land has now been converted to student-only use with no discussion or timeline for change. Additionally, the water fountains at WNL's track are broken and have been for about a year. And since APS doesn't have a DES-style repair site, I don't really know where to go to get this fixed. And it's been off for a long time, and this past summer, it was kind of dangerous with the extreme heat. So if you could coordinate with the WNL principal or APS staff to help get that fixed, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your consideration on these items.
Thank you, Ms. Merling.
Our next speaker is Jane Green, followed by Audrey Clement.
Ms. Green. You need to just, I think there should be a button at the bottom. There you go.
Like that? Hey, how about that? Hey. Good morning. I am here on behalf of the Alliance for Housing Solutions to speak in support of the Missing Middle Housing Study as it moves from Phase 1 to Phase 2. Thank you so much to the county board for authorizing this important study. Arlington has been a national leader in smart growth. Expanded housing choice in neighborhoods throughout the county is the next step to support equitable, sustainable development. Thank you to the staff for the tremendous work achieved so far, both in terms of the research as well as the generous time for community engagement. The Alliance for Housing Solutions has also engaged with the Arlington community to hear about the benefits that expanded housing choice can provide. Some things we've heard. Allowing smaller home sizes and shared lots can curb out-of-reach home prices and increase attainable home options in neighborhoods close to jobs, schools, public transit, parks, and businesses. Providing more home choices in areas with currently very few options other than the most expensive single-family homes. Reducing Arlington's ecological impact by improving walkability, reducing sprawl, easing traffic congestion, and lowering carbon emissions. Increasing the supply of efficiently-sized, easy-to-maintain, and even accessible homes so that more Arlingtonians can age in place. Of course, some members of the community have expressed concerns. Stormwater management, tree canopy preservation, school, capacity in traffic, these are challenges that our county faces as a vibrant and growing community, and will continue to face these challenges regardless of zoning. But we are lucky in Arlington to have a robust set of comprehensive plans to address each of these issues. We shouldn't make our goal of housing diversity responsible to address every challenge of urban planning. Time is not a luxury in this endeavor. We hope that Phases 2 and 3 can move more quickly to develop specific recommendations for how to expand housing supply and choice. I hope that Arlington can continue its leadership in housing policy as we seek to live up to our vision of being a diverse and inclusive community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Audrey Clement, followed by Jorge Figueroa.
Ms. Clement, are you there virtually?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Ms. Clement.
Hey, I welcome members of the board and the county manager. I'm Audrey Clement from Westover. It's time for my annual political yard sign report to county board. The good news is that I recovered about 450 signs from the medians and polls, or 2/3 of the total. This is a significant improvement over 2020, when 2/3 of my signs were trashed. The bad news is an Arlenow report forwarded by the Arlington GOP that one of their number caught a county resident on a moped confiscating Yonkin signs from the medians and published photos to prove it. Kudos to the GOP operative who came upon the scene and had the presence of mind to record the vandal's license plate. It was the first time in recent memory that someone has actually obtained prima facie evidence of systematic political sign removal in the county. If the operative follows through with a formal complaint, it may deter further organized efforts to undermine the electoral process in Arlington County. Yet Fox 5 reported after the election that someone had defaced Yonkin signs with the epithet racist following his upset victory on November 2. Clearly, optimism that the political climate has improved is premature. Another cause for concern is Chairman DiFranti's response to my earlier criticism of the electoral board's arbitrary decision to extend by several weeks the period for yard sign display in the medians. DiFranti said he agreed with the zoning office's interpretation of the county's sign ordinance, despite the fact that zoning ordinance 13.11.2.8.1 explicitly limits political sign displays to 31 days before the election. It looks like the sign ordinance has gone the way of other provisions of county code, which are honored in the breach whenever they prove to be inconvenient. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clement. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Jorge Figueroa, followed by Mary Glass.
Mr. Figueroa. Virtually? I don't see him in person. We will go ahead and go on to Ms. Glass, and if Mr. Figueroa comes, we will go back. Figueroa, excuse me. Ms. Glass.
Ms. Clement, if you could please turn off your camera while we wait for Ms. Glass.
Are you there, Ms. Glass? So shall we go ahead and go on, Madam Clerk, and then come back to Ms. Glass? She is either here on mute or...
All righty, we'll go on to Eric Ackerman.
Mr. Ackerman.
I'm... Yes.
Oh, I'm here.
Ms. Glass, we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eric Ackerman. I speak for the Arlington Tree Action Group. We join with the EcoAction Group to urge you to declare a climate change emergency. If you've been reading the newspapers in the last two years, you know very well, the world system has been pushed into a condition of disequilibrium. It's obviously a global issue, but there are many things we can do at the local level. We need your leadership. We need, the first step is to declare a formal emergency. Many things can flow from that. I'm not, don't have the time today to talk about this in any great detail, but let me just urge you to recognize that this is the most important issue on your agenda, long-term. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. We'll go back to Ms. Glass. Are you there, Ms. Glass?
If we could just give her a few seconds. I see she's here.
She may be on mute.
There she is.
I'm hearing Mr. Ack...
Ms. Glass, can you, we're having a little trouble hearing you. You want to just start from the beginning, introduce yourself, and then go forward with your comments?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead. Little, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Just keep speaking up loudly, and we can hear you. Go ahead.
No, I'm not on mute. I'm here.
We can hear you. Go ahead, Ms. Glass.
Okay.
Ms. Glass, if you have another device running, if you could turn that down and just listen through the Teams session?
Yes, can you put up my slides?
Yes, go ahead and begin speaking, and I'll put that up.
Can you put up my slides?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Glass.
Okay.
Ms. Glass, go ahead, please.
All right. Thank you very much. Glad to be here again a year later to talk about a small but consequential issue, that of the Arlington Tree Canopy Study. I have contacted the board of the... I'm sorry, we're getting a lag here.
Yeah, we are also, we think, is it possible you have another device on listening to the session?
Um...
Just one device? And why don't you go ahead and try it again, and we'll go forward. Go ahead, Ms. Glass.
Okay. Is this better?
Yes, go ahead. Perfect. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Sorry for the delay. Thank you for listening to me again. Can we go to Slide 2? Okay, thank you so much. I want to bring up a small but consequential matter. I know you have many other very weighty things you need to talk about at this meeting, but I do think it's important to reiterate the expressions of outreach and concern that have come regarding this issue over the last year. Last November, I presented to this board. In December, I brought in an expert to talk to the county staff. In March, the CivFED passed a resolution asking for action. In June, the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission asked for budget for a canopy study. And in June, participants of a collaborative sponsored by the CivFED talked to two board members about using the study and the analysis to help with equity issues. Next slide, please. Further, in October, EcoAction has mentioned, I wanted to declare a emergency, a climate change emergency, and preserving trees was an issue that they brought up. In October, we found out there are surface floods that are available. In November, we finished a year-long study with the public collaborative of many citizens and staff to talk about what could be done, included requests for data. And finally, recently, in drafting new Chesapeake Bay regulations, land cover analyses look like they're going to be a very important factor, so we need to know that. To date, we've not had a response to the request for action or meetings. And then, next slide, please. What I would request is that we open a two-way, face-to-face dialogue on what needs to be done in this area. We need to define a scope of work that allows rapid delivery of information for these regulatory and planning purposes, and that we use procurement procedures that accelerate contracting. Now, I did receive a contact late last night regarding further meetings. I think it was in response to this speaking, so I hope that we will move expeditiously on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ahmad Rahman, followed by Scott Wing.
Mr. Rahman.
Hi, morning. Can, is my sound coming through?
It sure is. Go ahead. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, good morning. My name's Ahmad from Roslyn, and I'm also with the Arlington Tree Action Group. And even though the weather's getting colder, and in the words of the poet, "We're well into the season of mists and mellow fruitfulness," I'd like to ask the board what the county is planning to do to combat the urban heat island effect. And of course, the cycle and the problems caused by the urban heat island effect are well documented. All this asphalt and concrete absorbs and retains heat, which makes our county warmer, which then means residents have to use more electricity to run ACs, which in turn releases even more heat. And beyond just raising our electricity bills, this increases emissions, worsens the water in our rivers and the air we breathe, and, as is the case with most issues, it hits hardest and most vulnerable members of our community, the elderly, the young, the sick, and the poor. And we know that this is a problem that's only going to get worse because on the larger scale, due to the irreversible damage we've caused to our climate, we're going to have hotter days ahead. And like me, you don't have to be a longtime resident to see how fast the county is growing, especially along the metro corridor. So before we keep approving new buildings and site plans, the county needs to think how to reduce and offset the urban heat island effect. And of course, as a member of the Arlington Tree Action Group, I believe planting trees is a necessary part of the solution. But I'd like to know, in as much detail as possible, what those of you who have the reins of the county are currently doing and what you plan to do to solve this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rahman. We will, we will respond at the end of each of the, at the end of all comments and provide just a little bit of a sense of our plans on that issue, as with all the other issues. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Scott Wing, followed by Jim Hurris.
Mr. Wing.
Thank you very much. The button? Yes.
There you go. And then you can also, you may want to lift it a little bit. There's a button, and you can raise the riser a little bit if you like.
Thanks. I'm here to, I'm Scott Wing of South Arlington. I'm here to encourage the county to eliminate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in its equipment and to work with the Virginia State Government to gain permission to end their use in Arlington County altogether. I think the reasons are quite clear. They are pernicious noise problems, usually exceeding the levels that are considered safe. They create far more pollution than you would expect for such a small engine because they, many of them are two-cycle engines that burn oil and gas. They are, they also encourage ecologically unsound landscaping practices, such as carting leaf mulch around in big trucks when it could be composted safely and efficiently on-site and redistributed. Finally, and maybe this is less important, but if Fairfax County can do this, as I understand they just did, and I submitted a recent article, they have decided to end leaf blowers in their fleet, I think Arlington can follow, even if it has missed the chance to lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wing. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jim Hurris, followed by Patty C.
Mr. Hurris, are you there virtually? Mr. Hurris?
Star 6 to unmute.
Can you?
There you go. We can, might need to do it one more time.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I and others are increasingly concerned about what appears to be the complete lack of multimodal safety on Arlington streets, sidewalks, trails, plazas, arterials, and interstates. Reckless riding and driving appear to be increasing. I and others will no longer use the W O and D and Mount Vernon Trails because of high-speed and reckless riding by bicyclists and those riding personal mobility vehicles, e.g. scooters. Now, the same kind of reckless behavior is occurring on Arlington's sidewalks, including residential areas where the sidewalks are only about 3 and 1/2 feet wide. I noticed that the plans for Pentagon City include repurposing sidewalks for recreation, repurposing sidewalks for recreation. Many pedestrians don't use crosswalks and won't use crosswalks, no matter how many crosswalks are installed on a street. crosswalks are installed, um, on a street. Because there is no attention paid to, uh, multimodal safety, how many future accidents with injuries will occur? It appears that increasing dedicated lanes for bicycles, scooters, and other personal mobility vehicles isn't preventing, uh, reckless behavior by riders of those vehicles. And, um, I live off, uh, I-395, and the amount of reckless driving there is becoming quite frightening. People weaving with high-speed, uh, at high-speed 95 and a 55. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurris. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Patty C, and then we will try to circle back to Jorge Figueroa.
Ms. C, or Patty? Go ahead.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es, uh...
If you can, just a little closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Perfect.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Patricia Chinchiya. Nosotros somos el grupo de la colectiva de Arlington. El motivo de estar acá es porque no queremos...
Momento?
Okay.
For the traducir. The translator, could you, uh, help, um, with a list, uh, the introduction and perhaps what, um, Ms. Chinchiya has mentioned so far?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Perfect. Good morning, my name is Patricia Chinchiya, and I'm with the group of colectiva from Arlington. Adelante?
Si, el motivo que estamos acá es porque no queremos que la policía de Arlington colabore con migración, porque...
Oh, momento. The reason why we're here is because we don't want the Arlington Police to work and collaborate with immigration.
Porque muchas familias somos, estamos siendo muy afectadas. Uh, que muchos de nuestros hijos están quedando sin sus mamás y sus papás, y yo pienso, verdad, que eso no es justo.
And lots of families are being affected by this. Lots of children are left alone without their mothers and fathers, and we don't think that's fair.
Si, y hay jóvenes, uh, que han tratado quitarse de la vida, y no queremos que pase eso, la verdad de las cosas, porque todos somos seres humanos, y necesitamos también que no, que no nos discriminen, porque todos somos iguales.
A lot of young people have taken their lives, and we don't want that to happen because we're all human beings.
Gracias, Patty. Um, and so just to, um, first echoing what the first speaker said as well, as you all know, we believe in defunding the police to use public resources for needs that our communities have, um, and for true safety for our community. And we also just want to echo, right, as you all know, we delivered the communities of Arlington protected from the abuse by ICE policy that has been drafted with our community, for our community, and has all the revisions that are needed to make sure that it's something that the county can introduce and adopt as quickly as possible, right? These are ending collaborations that are not required by neither state nor federal law, and it's urgent and it's important, and y'all can definitely do it. Um, so we know that there are public meetings coming up. We have been delivering letters, over almost 400 to y'all so far. We have hundreds of petitions that we're gathering. We're going to go gather more right now, and we look forward to seeing the change that we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chinchina, Chinchini. Um, we will respond to your, uh, comments at the end after we've responded to all public comments. Really appreciate each of our public speakers. I will, um, go through, uh, each of the comments we've had, and I'll provide initial thoughts. Uh, the county manager, as well as colleagues, certainly jump in if you like. Yes, Mr. Karantonis?
Maybe we want to check whether Mr. Figueroa is still...
Oh, yes. Is, is Mr. Figueroa here, virtually? I didn't see him in person, and that's why I was, and he, I think he was going to be here in person, so thank you, Mr. Karantonis, for being thorough and making sure that everyone who wanted to speak has had and has an opportunity to speak. Evangelina Rivas, I don't know if you're there, uh, virtually. Your comments regarding, um, the purpose of, uh, police, um, guardianship to make sure that all members, uh, and residents, regardless of immigration status, in our community, as well as visitors, are safe, is what I see as the primary purpose of our police. Um, I'm glad you mentioned housing, and I'm glad you mentioned social services. We have, um, sought to invest heavily in both and sought to invest more over the last year and, um, for, three or four, actually, uh, year and five months since the murder of, um, in, in Minneapolis, uh, and the, the clear, clarion call with respect to reforming our systems of criminal justice systems, uh, our systems of criminal justice. There is certainly more. We have taken steps in the budget towards body-worn cameras. We have set up a civilian oversight board. We are engaged in a discussion that, that will, I'll touch on a little bit later, uh, regarding, uh, how we can, um, continue and clarify our, and improve upon our commitment to keeping our immigrant neighbors, friends, families safe. And those are sort of some initial thoughts. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if you had any other. I know that the specific point I, I don't have at the top of my mind is, is the, um, amount of resources that we put into social services, which is, uh, significantly more than the 119 million that Ms., uh, that Evangelina mentioned. But I'll, I'll go to Mr., uh, Mr. Manager, Mr. Schwartz, and certainly if there are other comments from colleagues, go ahead. And I'm not putting you on the spot to know all the numbers.
Right, so, um, I, I would, I don't actually have the numbers at my fingertips. I don't, didn't have a chance to check on them. But one thing I would add, which is, in approximately $72 million Arlington County Police Department budget, the vast majority of that goes to personnel costs, and, um, close to 90% of our officers are trained, um, in crisis intervention training, and, you know, I think that a lot of people would, um, whether you agree or disagree with the amount of money that goes to our police, realize that they're actually out there every day in our community, uh, interacting with residents and trying to improve things. We've just, uh, with Chief Penn coming on board, uh, in, uh, early summer, created a community engagement division, uh, doing a lot of work, which, fortunately, we hardly ever discharge our firearms. We, the vast majority, 99.9% of the work we do, is talking to our residents and making sure that they're doing well. And this, uh, concept that, um, they're somehow divorced from social services couldn't be further from the truth. As you heard here in a work session the county board had with our delegation, the close relationship they have with our Department of Human Services in dealing with what is truly an epidemic in our country, which is the mental health crisis. So, that's just a few examples, and I'd be happy to supplement that with further information.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That covers it from me. Uh, Ms. Garvey, go ahead.
Yeah, I might just add for Ms. Rivas, I think our, our police are working really very hard on, on outreach and, um, actually would like to have conversations with the community. They are doing that, but if you and a, and a group would like to have an officer who come and talk about their work and what they do, um, I think that might be a useful conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey. Uh, I think, um, our chief is, um, in my, from my experience, one of the most open, um, and individuals as, as speaking, as listening at a deep level, and, um, I'm also mindful that, uh, our officers, um, there's a requirement, in addition to the crisis intervention training, there's a requirement for slightly, uh, additional, uh, investment in education to make sure we have the best officers that we can find. So, um, I think that that covers Ms. Rivas, and, uh, we'll go to Ms. Merle. You mentioned ADA accessibility for voting. I know that is an ongoing concern that we have, uh, worked on, uh, with respect to the ANC building. I think what we'll have to do is take that offline and follow up. We'll send, one of us will send an email just to specific concerns. With respect, similarly, with respect to the parks and fields, um, and, uh, you mentioned the, the, the water issue, um, we will follow up on that separately. Uh, appreciate your continued engagement with our community. Ms. Green came and I think has left with her, um, I believe her daughter, um, regarding expanding housing choices, um, and, uh, so that is, um, an area that we will, we'll hear a report on, on Tuesday. It's an area of interest to all members of the board. Uh, appreciate your staying so engaged, Ms. Green. It is related to, um, opportunity and, uh, for all Arlingtonians and some of the equity work that we need to continue to do. Ms. Clement came in regarding political yard signs, um, and a video which I have not seen. I think the best way to put it is, is, uh, the decision with respect to the interpretation of the election code section is an administrative decision that is actually, uh, I believe, community planning and, and housing and development is most appropriate to make, make. So I'll take the, the critique that perhaps I should have commented less, um, but it was, I was in agreement with the decision that, uh, community planning, housing, and development made on that issue. Um, and the interpretation of the, the words, the election, I think, is the key question. Ms. Glass, you were right. Um, I did see that you were, uh, coming in today, uh, and, uh, sent you a quick note. Uh, it has been since the 25th of October. I would say that we have actually met, Mr. Karantonis and I met with you virtually. Um, we, since the 25th of October, we had a briefing from staff that involved commission leaders as well, and, uh, doing that briefing was what I prioritized between October 25th and, uh, November. Part of the key issue is the, uh, Forestry and Natural Resources, uh, Master Plan, which, uh, we want to make sure we get the, the scope right for the data that we eventually need. So we will certainly follow up on that one and happy to have a conversation, uh, further. It is possible that, um, I for one at least may not come out in precisely the same place with respect to interim funding, uh, right now, um, but I do support data, and I do think that as we finish and accelerate our work or continue our work on the natural resource, Forestry and Nat, Natural Resources Master Plan, your points have relevance and are important. Mr. Ackerman came in, you came in, uh, regarding the climate change issue and the, the, the importance of that. The phrase "emergency" under Virginia law include, is essentially, it often, it triggers some items, and Mr. Schwartz can kind of add, as well as Ms. Core with respect to this, but it includes, um, there's, an emergency, as you may know, triggers a FEMA designation, and it is a time-sensitive, in some cases, and it is a time-sensitive and specific step. Um, I, I think that climate change is absolutely the biggest long-term issue is, that we face in many ways. We also face short-term challenges as far as equity, uh, and, and, and justice. I would say that I feel is, feel that, um, we will have continued conversation on this over the coming week. We've also received a letter on this. Making measurable progress on climate change is most important, and I'm concerned about some of the impacts of, of, um, defining an emergency when we need, uh, also to continue to take steps. Mr. Dorsey and then Ms. Crystal.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to put a fine point on it, uh, the circumstances under which, uh, an emergency can be declared in Virginia, uh, does not include the experience of climate change. So absent that, um, our declaring the emergency would be a rhetorical device, and not to say that that's not useful, but I do think this board has been pretty clear that we, we view climate change and climate change mitigation and integrating that throughout all that we do in local government and making sure all of our long-term or immediate and long-term plans reflect, um, climate change considerations is an extremely top priority. So I think, uh, we, we hear you in, in belief and in substance, but understand that we are not able to declare an emergency that, uh, gives the local government broader powers than it enjoys already.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Ms. Crystal.
Absolutely. Well, notwithstanding that, I just wanted to say, you know, we have the authority to declare a local emergency, which allows the county manager to, to suspend some of the processes in Arlington. And so I just wanted to say, uh, Mr. Ackerman, I agree, there is no greater issue before the county board. I think the, the recognition of the emergency, um, small E emergency, in which we find ourselves with regard to climate, is certainly what motivated this board to adopt zero, um, a, a carbon neutral goal of 2050, when we adopted the, uh, Community Energy Plan, and certainly is what's motivated us, um, to continue to, to press for bigger, um, shifts towards carbon neutral practices and zero emissions practices, um, as we develop the implementation plan. But I wanted to share, I actually asked, um, our county attorney to, to share a little bit of what the consequences would be if we did declare a local emergency, and I note that actually, I think it would work counter to the goals for which, um, uh, ECO Action Arlington and ATAG have joined, um, in advocating for a climate emergency, among other things, it would allow the manager, um, it would suspend rather the requirement that the manager has to follow the adopted budget set by this board. And so I know ATAG, ECO Action, and others have fought hard for, uh, priorities within the county budget, um, and are doing so now with regard to allocation of, uh, of, um, ARPA money, closeout money, and certainly with the upcoming fiscal '23, uh, to ensure that the prioritization of those budget dollars reflect, uh, our climate goals and our collective prioritization of reaching that net zero by 2050 goal. So, uh, to declare an emergency and then suspend whether the county manager has to actually follow all of that hard one, uh, budgeting process, I think might be a little counterintuitive, so, um, but I wanted to say, I think as my colleagues have, that I appreciate the spirit, frankly, um, whether we declare an emergency or not, treating climate change like the emergency that it is. Um, I think we've tried to do that declaratively through our, uh, Community Energy Plan, and we are engaged, certainly with the leadership of ATAG, ECO Action, C2E2, and others, um, in every day trying to make sure that our practices, whether it's electrification of our bus fleet, which we'll talk about later today, um, or, uh, housing and development practices, like the ones Ms. Green flagged, um, are all consistent with that emergency of a goal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Um, and, um, so I think that covers the response. Um, I, I do want to just mention, we've had a Community Energy Plan for a long time. In the ECO Action letter, there are some specific steps, and that's where I think, uh, I'd really like to focus. The CEP implementation framework is a, is an important piece of work that I think can make the, uh, the most measurable difference on climate change in the shortest period of time. So, uh, Ms., Mr. Rahman, I believe, my apologies if the pronunciation isn't, isn't perfect, but you mentioned the concerns about urban heat islands. I know that, that I've seen, I think, some analysis of Arlington and other communities. We have a long history of requiring, um, planting of trees when there's, um, uh, development. That certainly is not enough in itself. We are very concerned here on this issues. What we have been doing on, on trees in particular is we have been investing, uh, we've, in our legislative process, we need more authority from Richmond. We also are exploring all the avenues and ways in which we can, uh, make a difference here locally. I will say with respect to, um, buildings here, um, uh, you know, I, I used to live in, in a, in a building near the courthouse that was, uh, vertical, a multifamily building, and there are actually, in some instances, I believe, the key challenge to reduction of trees often is single-family development, uh, in Arlington. That's where a lot, we're losing a lot of trees, and so, um, mindful of your comments and we'll continue the dialogue. Uh, yes, oh, I, I missed, on the climate issue, let's go to Mr. Karantonis first. Climate, you wanted to talk, and I think Mr. Ackerman is still here, and then you also, if you wanted to speak to the, to the, uh, to the Tree Action Group, additional comment or separate comment, go ahead, Mr. Karantonis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I want to make only one, uh, one comment, and mark, out of nine testimonies, four were climate-related. So that's more than 40%. Uh, so that means something, and, and I do believe that the, uh, the vehicle of asking for declaration of a climate emergency is basically, uh, telling us that there is a sense of, uh, urgency for action. Uh, and Mr. Rahman's, um, testimony is, is actually spot-on. It, it needs a lot to measure, mitigate, uh, heat, urban heat island effects. Uh, it's not only trees. Uh, trees are very important, uh, but there is a lot of, a lot more that needs to be done, and this has to be, um, put forward in everything we do. So whether we are asking everybody for green roofs, whether we are asking everybody to, to, to move into public transportation and reduce the asphalt needed for, for, uh, the, the, the traffic volume that we have today, uh, we need to change our lifestyle, basically, as a community, and it's a very, uh, it's, it's really significant that we're having this public discussion today, uh, while in Glasgow, the COP26 conference is coming to, to an end, hopefully with positive, uh, results. So we need to read this, uh, as a, as a... So we need to read this as a call for urgent action, to put more urgency and more pressure. And I believe that we are committed to do that together with our community, and actually the comments that you are hearing here today is an invitation for more ideas on how we can reduce our carbon footprint in a faster way than we have done until now.
Thank you, Mr. Karantonas. Well said. I'll go to Mr. Dorsey and then come back to you, Ms. Garvey.
Thank you. Just to add to Mr. Karantonas's thoughts on Mr. Rahman's testimony, he asked specifically about what is it that we're doing, and I just wanted to make sure that people didn't forget that this board, over the last couple of years, has begun to become expert on the use of biophilia in development and redevelopment, which is going to be key to combating urban heat islands. The green roofs that Mr. Karantonas mentioned, along with reflective roofs, need to become integrated into our planning processes so that each building, particularly in our vulnerable communities, two heat islands, actually are constructed in a way that are going to mitigate to the greatest extent possible. We have begun with some buildings in Roslyn to look at the facades and the walls and integrating green into that to combat the heat island. And there's also work to do in terms of the federal government, state and local government, encouraging retrofits of existing buildings to provide better shade and better opportunities. There are a lot of different things that can be done in addition to tree planting, where that is appropriate, that I believe we are either well on the way to doing or have some long-term plans to up our game, if you will. So I think if people, as Mr. Karantonas mentioned, make it a priority in all that they're looking at, it will certainly be substantially reduced when it comes to the devastating effects of urban heat islands.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey, as well. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, I think we're all sort of saying the same thing or building on each other. I agree with everything my colleagues have said. Would like to point out, I think there's an intersection with climate change and so many different things, and heat islands obviously gets into equity issues because you find areas that are poor and often have more folks of color living in them, they don't tend to have as many trees. So there's a whole equity intersection. We're focusing on that as well. I would encourage, I think it's great, as, you know, as Mr. Karantonas pointed out, there are more than 40% of our speakers, and we're hearing a lot about climate change. I mean, that's what's going to make change. It's really a matter of political will. It's a big, heavy lift, and pleased that people are coming to us. We are very limited by the state often in what we do. We are working on the state level to try to give ourselves more ability to do things to protect trees. I would encourage everyone, if you're really, you know, willing to do a little more in your advocacy, contact your state delegates and senators. They're open to things, too, but really keep your eye on Richmond as well. They limit a lot what we can do. And as Mr. Dorsey pointed out as well, there is the federal level. So just pleased that people are here. We have a lot of different commissions in a lot of different areas. Planning Commission has got a real intersection with all of this, too, so encourage people to continue to get involved. And I think as we all get more and more involved and push more and more, we will make more change. I think we're in for some tough times with the climate, but we're all starting to work on it, and we are doing our best as we can here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey. Oh, Ms. Crystal, go ahead.
One comment in passing, I'm not sure anybody's mentioned it. I've been trying to listen. We are in the middle of updating our natural resources management plan. So I think some might get the impression from some of the comments or even this discussion that there's no framework on which we can hang our hats when it comes to trying to incorporate some of the practices. Mr. Dorsey referenced or addressed the equity issues that Ms. Garvey just highlighted, or in general, recognize the interaction between preservation and expansion of our natural resources and the climate emergency, as Mr. Karantonas was saying. And so I would just urge people, I know our new website has had a few growing pains, which we'll probably be talking about later today, but if you do go to arlingtonva.us and search natural resources management plan, you can find a lot of great materials and ways to get involved and updated. This is a comprehensive plan element, which speaks to how we plan to steward our natural resources, and we've certainly tried to make principles like biophilia and racial equity key stage-setting priorities and how this community can come together to update that important element of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. I think, appreciate all colleagues' comments with respect to the urgency for change, both on heat islands and on climate. We included a 2025 goal and 2035 goals. We've invested in a solar field. We updated our building policy. I think it could be useful, certainly all of us are open to continued dialogue with Mr. Rahman and Mr. Ackerman and others and our community on this issue. The next speaker was Mr. Wing. I think he has left. I mentioned gas-powered leaf blowers, which we have heard quite a lot recently from our community. I think I'll, and we are in the process, I believe, within the next days, it's likely that we'll have some progress to mention, but I'll ask the manager if he can describe a little bit the process he's been working over the last 48 hours on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, when we have discussion about allocation of budget funds under the, under ARPA and closeout, we will come back with some details on that. The relative number of gas-powered leaf blowers we have is fairly small. We also have contracts with a number of outside landscaping firms, so we're trying to work through some of those issues. And I know Mr. Dorsey spoke to this, I think, last month about some of the difficulty with the legislative solution here, but as far as spending money and replacing our current set of gas-powered leaf blowers, I think you'll hear a proposal from us on that on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I would agree with the legislative conclusion. 77% of Arlington chose differently in the gubernatorial election. We're going to have to continue to be hopeful while being prepared to fight for Arlington's ideals every moment. I think that statewide discretion to allow localities to ban leaf blowers, I would not be bullish on the prospects for that happening in this legislative session, but we will keep an eye on it with our legislative liaison. Mr. Jerez, you spoke about multimodal safety. Today, we will be taking action with respect to traffic safety. Your concerns on paths are also part of our Vision Zero work and very mindful, so I do think we're actually doing quite a bit on it, and yet it is a continued and important concern that you raise. Mr. Karantonas.
Oh, no.
That's digital. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jerez. Patty, oh, yes, sorry, Mr. Schwartz, go ahead.
I did want to remind everybody, we're in the process right now of hiring five additional staff for our police department, who will not be sworn officers, but instead will be involved specifically in traffic enforcement. That was something the county board approved in the budget for this fiscal year. As with all our hiring efforts, it's been a little bit slower than I would have liked, but we have made, I think we're the first jurisdiction in the area to have a specific cadre of people focused on the issue that Mr. Jerez brought up.
Thank you for that reminder. I think it's very, really important with respect to traffic safety and fits in with several other comments that have been made. Patty, Ms. Chinchini, I believe, thank you. I'll also want to see if we can ask our Spanish interpreter to help, and I'll seek to sort of speak in sizes that will work with our interpreter. Thank you for coming in and for sharing your concerns. I am, and I think all of us on the board, are aware of the challenges some young, some of our young dreamers and young people are facing, and I really appreciate you coming in today. So I don't know if the Spanish interpreter might be able to just translate that, please, if she is still there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Señora Monica Chinchilla, muchas gracias por venir el día de hoy. Queremos agradecerle y sabemos el problema que hay con todos los soñadores, los dreamers.
Thank you as well for the advocacy from the members of La Colectiva. Appreciate your continued work on this and your acknowledgement or recognition that we will have a series of virtual forums on the 30th, November 30th, to take input and work on this issue.
Así que nosotros también le queremos agradecer por su abogacía de la colectiva en conjunto y por seguir trabajando en cuanto a estos asuntos y reconocer también su trabajo arduo. Vamos a tener varios foros virtuales el 30 de noviembre.
We have noted and reviewed the work that nearby jurisdictions have been doing on these issues and read your most recent two letters. And what we want to do is truly listen to the concerns of the community regarding the challenges and issues that you have pointed to.
Así que nosotros estamos, hemos revisado ya varios documentos y hemos estado viendo lo que están haciendo otras jurisdicciones en cuanto a estos asuntos y también leímos sus dos cartas más recientes y queremos escuchar sus preocupaciones en cuanto a la comunidad y los desafíos que han tenido y hacer algo.
Our next step is, we have had a history in 2007, 2011, 2017. I was not on the board, but we have had a history of board support and staff support for an inclusive community. That is not to say that we have been perfect.
Así que nosotros el siguiente paso que tenemos, y esto ya tiene un historial del 2007, del 2011, del 2017, yo todavía no estaba en la junta directiva, pero hemos estado apoyando como personal en cuanto a la inclusión como comunidad.
And I'll conclude by saying we are ready and engage, ready to further engage, listen, and see what additional steps we can take to keep our immigrant residents and all our residents and our visitors safe, and that's the purpose of the 30th, and looking forward to that conversation, I guess. And then I'll let colleagues or the manager, if you have additional points, but first, if our translator could take that last piece.
Así que queremos concluir diciendo que estamos listos para seguir involucrándonos y participando con ustedes, escucharlos y ver qué otros pasos adicionales podemos tomar para poder hacer que nuestra comunidad de inmigrantes y la comunidad en general y la gente que nos visita esté en seguros. Y el propósito de el día 30 va a ser todo esto, poder escucharlos, así que estamos entusiasmados en cuanto a este día.
Gracias. Thank you. Nosotros conversamos, and I don't, we will work together, we'll listen and engage. I know that timing is, you have been working on this for some time. We are seeking to build on what we think is a record of some, and I would say, significant inclusivity, but we're mindful of your views, and we are ready to begin and look forward to November 30th. With that, I'll conclude the comments, and if you can just translate that. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your strongly felt, I know, and constructive comments today, as well as your written comments.
Así que para concluir esto, nosotros estamos ya listos para escucharlos y participar. Sabemos que han estado trabajando ustedes arduamente ya por un tiempo, y nosotros hemos estado tratando también de trabajar en la inclusión, y estamos listos para empezar a trabajar en conjunto. Muchas gracias por venir y muchas gracias por todos sus comentarios de manera oral y también escrita. Gracias.
Thank you. With that, we will go on to our consent agenda item. Thanks to all who came for public comment. You are welcome to stay, but you do not have to. So on our consent agenda item, Madam Clerk, have any items been pulled from our consent agenda?
Item number 14 has been pulled.
Great. With the exception of item 14, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dorsey, in the end, seconded by Mr. Karantonas. All those in favor of the consent agenda without item 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We have just passed our consent agenda. Colleagues, we will now, I'll just do a brief summary of our consent agenda items, and it may take a couple of minutes, we'll move expeditiously there. The items that were removed from today's consent agenda, number 14, will be considered at our recessed meeting on Tuesday, November 16, no earlier than 6:30 p.m. If you would like to speak on that item or any of the other items listed on Tuesday evening, please visit the county board's website at wwwcountyboard.arlingtonva.us or call the county board office at 703-228-3130 to sign up in advance. You may also sign up in person on the day of the meeting. So now, I believe we have a brief PowerPoint that'll just describe. I want to highlight, just because items are on the consent agenda does not mean that they are not very important. It's just that there has not been disagreement with respect to those items. So just a couple items that I'll highlight. I mentioned one is related to Vision Zero, and we can go to the next slide if that will work for you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We approved lowering the speed limit and creating permanent 20 miles per hour slow zones on residential segments near 13 schools in the county. I think this is so important as we try to keep our children safe. We've received an email just this week regarding this issue. There are more than 10 crashes involving speeding within 600 feet of a school every year in Arlington, and one in four crashes overall in Arlington involve speeding. This is a common sense, good step to make sure we keep our children and all of us safe. That's item 17 that we just passed. Next slide. We received actually a good $258,119 in funds to help with sewage utilities, water and sewage utilities, and very pleased that that will help some of our residents who are in need as the cost of living continues to be a challenge that we face over the past months, six months, and probably the six months to come. There were 981 residential customer accounts that were eligible for the funding awarded to Arlington. We will hope that we can address as many of those individuals' challenges as possible. Public safety, we received two grants, a number of grants, and took some steps. You can see listed $43,000 in a grant for the JAG program, provide training supplies, and then we received $125,000 in terms of mental health for our officers, which is a critical issue as our officers work to keep us safe. Those funds help with suicide awareness and prevention training. So that's a number of the items that we received under public safety grants, items 23 and 24. The next item, I believe that we may have one more slide, that covers the items I wanted to highlight, but there are others that we passed in our consent agenda, but we have passed those. We are now ready to move on to our regular agenda item. Madam Clerk, I'll give you just a minute or two, and then we will ask if you can call the first regular agenda item, please.
Item number 30 is update of the Public Art Master Plan, a sub-element of the Arlington County's comprehensive plan.
And we will go to Mr. Manager without hesitation or delay for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Presenting this morning is Angela Adams, along with Elizabeth Carragher, Deirdre Allen, and Michelle Isabel Stark. They'll have, I think, an interesting presentation, and I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Adams.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and members of the county board. My colleague Elizabeth, our consultant Todd Bressi, and I are all delighted to be here today to present the Public Art Master Plan update. I will kick off the presentation and then turn it over to Elizabeth. First, I would like to share some foundational information, starting with our definition of public art. For us, public art is the intentional involvement of artists in places and spaces where sufficient resources, time, energy, and... resources, time, energy and money are allocated and where the community is engaged. This slide outlines important milestones for the public art program. 21 years ago, the county board first adopted a public art policy. Four years later, the board adopted the county's first public art master plan. The following year, the county manager approved the program's first set of guidelines, which were then updated 10 years later in 2015. 10 years ago, the Public Art Program, a unit of Arlington Cultural Affairs, moved from the Parks Department to Arlington Economic Development. This slide highlights the success of the initial public art plan, which we feel has been very successful. Our metrics are based on the number of county projects as well as site plan projects and contributions to the public art fund that have occurred since the original PAMP adoption. The American Planning Association commended the county and our plan for using public art for promoting design excellence in a high-quality public realm. And finally, the PAMP is often used as a model for other public art programs and our advice is frequently sought by other cities developing public art master plans. Public art has been part of Arlington's landscape for more than 40 years, when the county, a citizen activist, an artist, a developer, and the National Endowment for the Arts joined to create Dark Star Park, a seminal landscape artwork created by Nancy Holt in Roslyn. This is an image from the popular Dark Star Park Day shadow alignment, which takes place on August the 1st at approximately 9:32 a.m. and attracts large crowds each year. Since the 1970s, the county and private developers have completed more than 100 permanent and temporary artworks in Arlington. Community support and peer recognition have validated the county's investment on public art and approaches the program has followed. For a bit of fun, the master plan update includes an interactive timeline and map of all the projects the program has completed to date. We started the update process in 2017 with an intense phase of research, followed by robust community engagement at all levels, including steering committees, a widely distributed questionnaire and public open houses. For something a little bit different, we developed two artists-led community engagement activities. Bookmaking with Sushmita Mazumdar that resulted in the creation of 250 handmade books relating to our public art collection and county wandering, walking tours with Graham Correll Allen that took place in locations across the county. Officially, the Public Art Master Plan is part of Arlington's comprehensive plan, which guides the coordinated development of the county. Technically, the Public Art Master Plan is a sub-element of the Public Spaces Master Plan, which was recently updated. That means our plan would be consulted as future planning efforts are undertaken and as the county makes investments in facilities and infrastructure and developers propose site plan projects. We also made sure that the vision and values of the master plan are consistent with enriching lives, Arlington Arts and Culture Strategy, the Arts Commission's strategic plan recently adopted by the county board. Finally, our plan will be supported by the Public Art Policy Program Guidelines and a brand-new implementation guide that will outline how the priorities in the Public Art Master Plan can be translated into actions through partnerships with county agencies and other collaborators. It's now been more than 17 years since the county's first public art plan was approved. This update was initiated to make sure the program is taking into consideration the changes in the context that have occurred since then and to re-ground the program in the values around which it was organized in the first place. We also seek to reflect new opportunities and practices as well as changing county policies and priorities. A number of changes were made in the plan to address how both the field of public art and the county have evolved since 2004. There is new emphasis on equity, audience development and engagement, biophilia, creative place making, social practice and artist residencies. There are two new priority corridors, Langston Boulevard and Potomac Riverfront, and two new themes, innovative Arlington and sustainable Arlington. Action and administrative items have been separated out into an implementation guide. Here in a nutshell is what you will find in the master plan update. The big picture, the vision, values, principles and goals that underlie Arlington's approach to public art. The context, what is happening in the county and what is happening in the field of public art that informs our program's approach. Program areas, what are the types of work that the program does? Priorities, where does the program focus its efforts? Regarding our vision, Arlington's Public Art Program is noteworthy among programs in the field because of our early and unwavering commitment to bringing curatorial thinking to how public spaces and public facilities are designed and activated. It's a big idea that places the program squarely within the fundamental conversations supporting the development of Arlington's public realm and puts us in constant dialogue with other county departments, private developers and partnership organizations. These values focus on the practice of public art. They are all different ways of saying, whatever opportunities we are focusing on, that artistic vision is paramount and collaboration and engagement are critical to the integrity of public art projects. We have added a new value related to equity because of the central importance of that topic today. Here, we seek to recognize the importance of everyone's creative and civic voice and the importance of all residents to be able to benefit from the community's resources. These principles are something of a checklist for how the program develops projects and interacts with other county agencies as well as with developers. They emphasize collaboration and integration with county planning and development processes. They also stress that outcomes should not only be aesthetic, they should make a meaningful difference in how people experience and relate to public spaces. This last principle, make public art accessible, engaging and enriching, is new and represents one of the ways the plan reflects our value of equity, by stressing the importance of public art as a tool for people in accessing the broader cultural and economic benefits of the community. Of these goals, the first two are traditional foundations of the program. The last two reflect changes in the field, particularly in regard to drawing on innovative ways that civically and socially engaged public art is being practiced. This includes focusing on how the program continually reaches out to community members to engage them with public art resources. A lot has changed in the past 17 years. There has been an expansion of interest in public art, which brings new opportunities for partnerships. At the same time, county priorities have evolved to include issues like sustainability, affordable housing and equity, creating new demands for county resources, but also offering new opportunities for the program to connect to what the community cares about. New directions in public art are influenced by changing priorities nationally, regionally and in the field of public art itself. Equity appears as a strong thread throughout the plan as we seek to increase diversity, access and inclusion, focusing on how public art can be distributed more widely in Arlington, diversifying the range of artists who are involved in projects and expanding community participation to new audiences. Biophilia. In 2020, the county was accepted into the International Biophilic Cities Network, which is dedicated to improving the connection between residents and urban nature. The plan emphasizes encouraging artists to engage with biophilic principles and explore the use of sustainable materials in their work. In particular, the Public Art Program is embracing two new approaches, creative place making and social practice. These involve place-based community engagement and focus particularly on how artists can help bring increased awareness to issues and opportunities. In Arlington, creative place making has been embraced by a variety of entities as a tool for engaging artists to advance the goal of enriching the public realm. In social practice projects, community-based processes are the core of the artistic approach. Recently, the program has worked on collaborative projects that explore the history of race and immigration in the county. For the past two years, printer Amos Kennedy, as artist in residence, has created free prints that explore the unique history of desegregation in Arlington. I will now turn it over to Elizabeth, who will take us through the second part of the PAMP update.
Arlington's Public Art Program has thrived because it has had a clear vision and the ability to work flexibly with many partners within county government and the broader community. Looking forward, the program will continue with its vision and maintain its entrepreneurial approach while prioritizing the following types of work. Two of these, public art and civic design and developer projects, have been the traditional backbone of Arlington's Public Art Program. For developer projects, the plan includes a new focus on affordable housing and recommends maintaining the inclusion of affordable housing developments in the public art policy, but encourages flexibility and provision of public art benefits with a focus on direct access to public art for residents. One way that we plan on achieving this is through an affordable housing artist and residency program, where an artist will work with residents and develop a concept for a permanent public artwork that would be installed at the site. Newer directions in the update include special projects, which means creative collaboration such as artist and residencies with other county agencies or community partners. Community-initiated projects, whether stemming from individual artists or community groups or another category, we seek to encourage going forward. The update also calls out audience development and engagement as a separate category. It's important not only to commission new work, but also find ways to keep existing artworks fresh in people's minds. For the past 17 years, the primary focus for public art and corridors has been on the Roslyn-Balston, Richmond Highway and Columbia Pike corridors, where development and infrastructure investment have been focused, as well as natural corridor four-mile run. In that way, the plan was building on the county's land use planning and capital investment priorities. This update adds two new corridors that are an emerging focus for planning, private investment and public amenities, Langston Boulevard and the Potomac River. The goals for public art and corridors are to integrate with broader planning and public realm efforts, to highlight urban and environmental systems and to activate and interpret artworks that already exist. One important goal to point out is assemble public and private resources into planned, curated and impactful experiences. This is highly ambitious and challenging, but also distinguishes Arlington's work. The plan identifies five themes that are reflective of Arlington's character and can set the stage for partnerships and for artist exploration. In 2004, the plan identified themes related to the county's history, its unique connection with the federal government and its international connections. This plan adds two more themes, sustainability and innovation, drawn from the county's focus on these environmental and economic development priorities. After the master plan is adopted, we will begin work on two other documents that are important for managing the program. We will update the county's public art policy, which was originally adopted 21 years ago. And we will begin work on an implementation guide previously noted by Angela, which is intended to be a companion piece to the Public Art Master Plan and will be reviewed and recommended for approval by the Arts Commission's Public Art Committee to the county manager. Overall, positive feedback was received on the plan through the public review process. The plan received praise for speaking to county priorities such as affordable housing, equity and biophilia. New themes of sustainable Arlington and innovative Arlington are appreciated as our new priority corridors, Langston Boulevard and Potomac River. A demonstrated commitment to audience development and engagement was also called out as important. This list shows a summary of high-level revisions to the plan prompted by comments from public review. At a glance, we strengthened our commitment to equity, specifically to increasing the diversity in themes, artists and locations. We also strengthened our commitment to community-based and place-making initiatives, biophilia and building evaluation strategies. We updated the global Arlington theme to address concerns about cultural appropriation. We updated references to the final phase of Quarter of Light, a treatment to the Mead Street Bridge to reflect that it is proposed. We made revisions related to the geographical locations for four-mile run, Green Valley and Sherlington. The PAMP was presented as an action item at the October and November Planning Commission meetings and received unanimous votes of approval at both. The plan also received unanimous votes of approval from the Arlington Commission for the Arts and the Transportation Commission. The plan was presented as an informational item to the Long Range Planning Committee, the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Historical Affairs and Landmark Review Board, and received letters of support and praise. Letters of support were also received from the Economic Development Commission and the National Landing Bid. And that culminates our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Carragher and Ms. Adams. We will now turn to our advisory groups. And stay close, we may well have questions for both of you. Appreciate all the work that you put into this, this PAMP update, as we might call. But is Ms. Patel there on behalf of the Planning Commission?
Oops. Excuse me. For some reason, I can't, okay, here we go.
We can hear you now, thanks.
You can hear me, but I was having a difficult time trying to get seen. Good morning, everyone. The Planning Commission did review, did hear about the Public Arts Master Plan. It came before the Planning Commission twice. The Planning Commission and its members were excited to see many of the changes and of course, as are all Arlingtonians, very excited about the use of public art in our spaces. One of the things that our commission wanted to be able to ensure that the county board understood is there were some comments that came in after our approval of the motions in support of the revisions. And so, had we received those comments timely, we would have spent some time discussing the matters raised therein. But based on the information that was provided to the Planning Commission, there was robust conversation during both sessions in which these matters came before the Planning Commission. Strong emphasis was placed on concerns regarding equity, biophilia and specifically when thinking about equity, diversity in location of public art, resources for how public art is funded, and then of course, artists. And thinking about diversity beyond the singular lens, but looking at intersectionality when we are considering, you know, deliberating on what art goes in a specific space, so making sure that there is a diverse group of thought leaders in that process and artist leaders and then also artists who are being commissioned to provide us the valuable resource of public art. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for joining us and for your comments, also covering the correspondence that came in, but we may have questions. We know there was, from your letter, there was some discussion of a subject that will probably be of interest. So now we will go on to our Arts Commission. And I think we have perhaps a couple of people from our Arts Commission. This is a big moment, but I see Ms. Queen Anna there. And over to you, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Arts Commission. Couple of points, per the county guidelines, the Public Art Master Plan is one of two significant policy documents related to public art for which the Arlington Commission for the Arts makes recommendations for the county board. So very important to us. On July 22nd, 2021, the Public Art Master Plan Update draft was presented to us as an action item. The commission, by a unanimous vote of 12 to 0, recommended that the county board adopt the proposed Public Art Master Plan update. And I will note, just as the previous speaker, that there has been some concerns that have come out. I noted that our conversation and presentation was on July 22nd. There have been concerns that have come out over the past few weeks, over the past few days. And I want to pause here to commend staff, who obviously, with the Arts Commission being under cultural, a part of economic development and working very closely with our staff in cultural affairs, staff have worked really hard to address concerns, even up to a letter that was dated November 11th, and here we are, November 13th. So I want to commend staff for their commitment and their diligence. Over and above these last few hours of burning the midnight hour oil, staff have been working for almost five years on the master plan update. And through robust research and innovative community engagement, my understanding is that through interviews, focus group, there were almost, there were hundreds of pieces of community engagement that took place. And so, because of that, community engagement is something that's critical to this process. The arts belong to Arlingtonians, so we are proud to support this master plan update. our arts and culture strategy that was adopted by the county board in 2017. It seems like it was recent, but the years are flying by, and so, this, you know, this strategy focuses on equity. And so, we've seen that the Public Art Master Plan Update has aligned itself with that. And many will know that we, as a commission, also adopted an equity statement that we worked really hardly, hard on, and presented to arts organizations throughout the county. And so, we see alignment there as well. The Public Art Master Plan reflects the current tone, tenor, and priorities of Arlington with an emphasis on equity and flexibility. It is noteworthy that when they started to do the update, when staff and consultant worked on the update, there wasn't, there were so many changes that have happened. Not only our recent changes, us being in a pandemic, the racial reckoning that has taken place, and all of the things that we've all been dealing with over the past few years, but it's really difficult to plan for the future and consider the past. And that was something that I commented on in our meeting. I really felt that there was attention to community, past, present, and future. And so, that's where we see a lot of innovation coming in. And I just have to emphasize, that is not easy. At the same time as staff and consultant have been working on this, the county has had a lot of policy updates, corridor updates, name changes, and trying to make sure that the plan update stays in step with all of that is quite an undertaking. So again, I want to commend the staff. I want to commend the Public Art Committee, for which we have commissioners who help to lead that, along with community members. And so, yeah, the plan does an excellent job of capturing here and now, as well as connecting yesterday, today, and tomorrow. So we understand that there are concerns, and we are extremely proud and pleased that staff have stayed in the moment and have tried to address all concerns. And I know that they will continue to do so. So thank you, Chair, for allowing me this time.
You're more than welcome, and thank you for your leadership. This is a seminal moment for a chair of a commission, and we're grateful for all your work. And I like, really appreciate your last point about staying with concerns as they're raised and continuing to do so. I believe that covers our testimony from commissions. Appreciate all of the Arts Commission for their work on this. And now we will turn to public speakers on this item. Madam Clerk, do we have public speakers on this item?
We do. Our first speaker is Tina Warden, followed by Bernard Byrne.
Ms. Warden, are you there virtually?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Thanks for joining us. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Di Feranti and members of the county board. I appreciate this opportunity to comment on the Public Art Master Plan Update. I am Tina Warden, a 50-year resident of Douglas Park. I've been actively engaged in Arlington for a decade, serving two terms on the Arlington Arts Commission until 2019. Today, I am speaking for myself. I am supporting the approval of the update to the Public Art Master Plan. Our public art program matters because it tells our story that translates across space and time. The high level of community engagement and collaboration with artists has built a meaningful collection where each piece is a visual narrative about the stakeholders or the area. These stories enrich my understanding of our values and deepen my connection to the community where I was raised and where my husband and I have raised our three sons. I am impressed by this update and commend our extremely talented public art staff for this work and their continued commitment and care to our community, our values, and our stories. This document accomplishes what it set out to do and so much more. It outlines a strategy for how public art will improve the quality of public spaces and the built environment for civic placemaking. And finally, I am grateful to the county board, our public art staff, and the many dedicated commission and community members for the value, that value the importance of art and continue to serve the greater good. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I can, I think we can hear in your voice how much you care about this step and stage and the arts in Arlington. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Bernard Byrne, followed by Bertie Davis.
Mr. Byrne.
Yes. Yes, I support the master plan. However, there is something that came in that I just learned about a few days ago that is really, just shouldn't be there. This involves, it's on page 107, I sent you a letter about this, I don't know if you read it. Page 107, discussing a section on Four Mile Run. Now, what happened was about on November 1, the Green Valley Civic Association sent something into you that said that they wanted some changes in the plan. One of these was an expansion of their neighborhood area. And they said, so this doesn't really belong in the master plan at all. At any rate, it resulted in, the staff agreed, because of course it was too late to go into commissions, that they said that Green Valley is a, is a, is, Green Valley historically is a significant, historically African-American neighborhood, north of Four Mile Run stream, with a southern border that begins in the middle of Arlington Mill Drive. That statement has absolutely no basis in fact, there's nothing in any county document, and it was fairly basically a land grab, whether they knew it or not. This area that they extended it to is the park that surrounds, that surrounds Four Mile Run. Now, the problem with this is that their neighborhood conservation plan doesn't give that as a lower border. Their neighborhood conservation plan, which passed in 1998, it was called the NORC Plan at the time, says that the, that the border is historic, is, is it, Green Valley is historically African-American border. Okay, it says that the boundaries are on the southwest, the southwest side of, is bounded on the southwest by South Four Mile Run Drive. That's about a quarter of a mile north of Arlington Mill Drive. So basically, when they've used this document, this process, to basically change their neighborhood conservation plan, and to take an area of public park and put it into their neighborhood, this will enable them, obviously, to plant neighborhood conservation projects that could take out open space, whatever. So I'm just saying, this is not belonging, it's incorrect. And so, I ask you to take out that statement that says, that talks about this altogether, that sentence. If you don't want to take it off, at least make it correct and say that the area, that the Green Valley is bounded on the southwest by South Four Mile Run Drive, which is actually what their own neighborhood conservation plan says. This is, as I say, it's a way of doing a land grab. Plain and simple. I don't know if they realize it. There's nothing that shows that generally, and they said that the border is in the middle of the street. Well, no neighborhood has a border in the middle of the street. The street is public property, the neighborhood always ends at the street itself. But basically, it's a wrong street. It's on the other side of Four Mile Run, it's not on the hill where they are, and it just shouldn't be, it's contrary to what their own plan says.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
So please consider that, it's page 107.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Bertie Davis.
Ms. Davis, are you there? Ms. Davis, are you there virtually? I don't believe you're in, you would be in the room. Madam Clerk, do you see someone who, do you believe Ms. Davis is with us?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. We will take questions and begin our discussion with the board. Madam Clerk, if Ms. Davis does arrive, or is there, please let me know, and we'll see if we can get her comments if she arrives and joins us virtually. So colleagues, I believe that completes, there's a couple of questions and issues raised. I know that there's been some correspondence from the Green Valley Civic Association, and I think that's one area. Then there's also been discussion of implementation and the equity, specific equity measurable targets and goals. That's a second area that strikes me as worthy of questions. I have a question a little bit that's related to that implementation. There'll be some conversation about how our full art fund is put together, but I think it would either be to, it would be to our AED staff, our cultural affairs staff. We have a matrix, if you could just describe at a high level, the work you've done over the last four or five days to seek to address the concerns raised by the Green Valley Civic Association to the, I think, I don't know whether that's to Ms. Adams, or probably to Ms. Adams, but it could be to any of the team.
Thank you, Chairman Di Feranti. So we have a matrix that was attached as a supplemental item to the board report late yesterday that addresses all of the comments that we received from, two letters from the Green Valley Civic Association, as well as some last-minute requests from Ray Farm and also the Sherlington Civic Association. Many of these related to language that spoke to the geographic boundaries of Green Valley and how they were referenced vis-à-vis Four Mile Run in the plan. So we believe that we have addressed the majority of these in the matrix.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. I appreciate it. And there's, I know they're big picture, there've been two letters, and the cultural affairs staff has been quite busy over the past 48, 72, 96 hours trying to respond. The second of the letters sort of mentions ongoing concerns. We take those concerns seriously, and we also, there's sort of the big-picture concerns that we take, we appreciate the Civic Association bringing this to us. We have ongoing steps, and we are not perfect. We will keep working on engagement, and we also note some of the specific suggestions. Ms. Adams has just addressed the larger matrix that gets to a lot of the very specific different items that are listed, where we have accepted, by my count, eight of the specific edits in the first round of the letter, and then further address some of the specific items, two or three of five additional suggestions. That's to the specifics, but to the general piece, want to acknowledge, we believe we have ongoing, this has shown ongoing need for engagement and to listen and do so with an open heart, and to do so with an appreciation for the need to continue to do better on that. So that's...
Mr. Chair, before you leave this, could you or Ms. Adams just give me, I'm sorry for this, but an exact reference to which comments have not been revised according to the recommendations? I think that'll be easier, since, as you mentioned, most have been accepted.
Sure. I think maybe that's, I'll see if Ms. Adams might kind of take that first. There's the matrix, the first matrix, and then there was a supplemental staff report. But Ms. Adams, would you be able to kind of highlight the two or three substantive areas where we have not yet, or did not in the end agree in full to the recommendations put forward by the Civic Association?
Yes, and with, needed backup from my colleagues, Michelle and Elizabeth, if I miss anything or misspeak. But it's my understanding from the first round that there was a question about why we included Drew Park as a reference in the plan, and it's because we reference civic projects that are in each of the areas, priority areas that we outline in the plan. So Drew Park was included because, just like any other example, we would reference upcoming civic projects. In addition, there was reference to the Snake Plan, which I believe was addressed as part of the Arts and Industry Study, and I believe Michelle might be able to address that further.
Ms. Isabel Stark.
Hi. Hi, good morning. Thank you. So the Snake was never, was not formally adopted by the county board, and that is why it is not referenced in the Public Art Master Plan. Having said that, you know, we thought there were many good ideas and concepts in that plan, and we will continue using that document as we go forward with projects in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Isabel Stark. And so, that's a couple of them. I think there may be one or two more, Ms. Adams.
And just to be clear, Mr. Chair, I was more interested, I noted those from the first round.
Yeah.
Are there any that are left over from the second letter and the final document that's before us today? That's what I'm trying to keep track of.
Thank you for clarifying. That's great.
I can, I can try.
Elizabeth?
Ms. Adams.
So let's, let's see if...
I was wondering if...
No problem. Let's see if staff can go first, and then you can follow, Ms. Crystal.
Elizabeth, do you want to comment on that? Anything that was left out from the second letter?
Yes, so I can share that we actually, the, we actually revised some references to the location of Green Valley and the Village at Sherlington. We simplified that, and we've stated that both of them are, both Green Valley and Sherling, the Village at Sherlington are located within the Four Mile Run watershed. We felt that this was accurate and is what is represented in planning documents related to Four Mile Run.
I will add that, thank you, Elizabeth. I will also add that that is the broadest definition or relationship that we could find that was inclusive of Four Mile Run, Village of Sherlington, and Green Valley.
Thank you both. Ms. Crystal.
I've got a fair bit of time trying to crosswalk these myself, because I share your interests, Mr. Dorsey. And so, excuse me, I think our staff can correct me if this is, if any of this is incorrect, but a couple of the follow-up comments we did receive from the Green Valley Civic Association in their second letter highlighted the way that the planning documents for Jenny Dean Park, Sherlington Park, and Sherlington Dog Park were defined. And I know you remember this well, from the adoption of the Four Mile Run area plan and the associated documents. And so, the, and I spent some time, I'm actually trying to make sure I understood this right, the relationship of those three park plans, they actually are consolidated under a master plan. But I think it was very reasonable for the Green Valley Civic Association to have some concern about how that was described. The other one, aside from the boundary issues, which, you know, sometimes a boundary isn't just a boundary, right? Like, that really spoke to a really important set of issues about Green Valley not being erased or whitewashed in this document. So I really appreciate their feedback and staff's willingness to take it. But the other thing that I thought was interesting, and maybe actually would benefit from just our being clear about this expectation from the DIAS, is that the Public Arts Master Plan talks a lot about creative uses within an envisioned arts and industry district. And I think, I suspect, what the Green Valley Civic Association, as they talked about, there are non-creative or non-artistic uses now and plan for in the future, right? This is going to be and is home to dog boarding, right? Maybe it'll be home in the future to micro warehousing. And I think when I saw, I don't want to impute what their intent was, but when I saw the comments from the Green Valley Civic Association, I thought, you know, this is a fair point. We want to make sure that the Public Arts Master Plan doesn't overwrite those intended uses. So I will tell you that I spent some time with the language. I think that it is, it is pretty clear that the Public Art Master Plan is focused on the creative potential uses within those umbrellas, and I don't think that there would be any grounds on which to cite the Public Art Master Plan description as a reason that non-creative industrial uses would be disallowed. So I really appreciated that feedback, spent some time on it, and I think it's, appreciate sort of the opportunity to infer and affirm that we will still welcome those not strictly speaking artistic or creative industrial uses, because they're a really important part of the present and future of the Four Mile Run area.
So that language, including industrial uses, was not changed? I thought it was.
There was some further feedback in the second letter from the GBCA, and that language, I believe, did not, did not get changed. The PAMP has now been corrected to align... The PAMP has now been corrected to align with the sort of descriptive language from Four Mile Run.
Right.
It's just that there's further description about, I think, realizing creative uses within that corridor. So staff, please tell me if I'm mischaracterizing any of that. But I, but I think they are harmonious now, I hope, and harmonious with a community vision that this will be creative as well as industrial.
And that's all extremely helpful. I just wanted to make sure that as we finish this, we establish what I'm hearing, what I saw and what I'm hearing confirmed, and correct me if I overstated, that the substantive comments that were accurate, that were raised, have been corrected. There was one instance where there is a matter of fact which has been corrected to reflect the actual fact, and the two areas that were omitted, or at least not addressed in the initial round, are functionally differences of opinion that can't be necessarily reconciled. Is that fair to say?
That, go ahead, staff.
Are you asking staff? Because, I mean, I would say that we, what we tried to do, and what we did actually, was use the exact language that's found in the Four Mile Run area plan related to an arts and industry district potential. And so we use the exact sentence found in that plan. And I'll note that the Four Mile Run Valley area plan does speak to the continuation of industrial uses. And as Ms. Crystal just said, the Public Art Master Plan, of course, is focused on creative uses and art. So I think between the two, there's certainly, they're aligned and speak to both concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey and Ms. Crystal, for that conversation, and just clarifying that the substantive issues have been addressed and taken to heart, and then there are the two wording areas where there's different, slightly different wording. I will say, with respect to the two letters, it is absolutely the case that the community and the county are on a journey towards being more inclusive and diverse, and we're committed to that work, we're committed to listening, we're committed to engaging. And to that end, we would like to do, to see if we can have an opportunity to sit down virtually or in person with the Green Valley Civic Association in the not-too-distant future to seek to hear fully the clearly, strongly, strongly felt concerns that were raised. I will own, there's, it's, there is a letter that, at least one, that I still owe to the Civic Association. I've been before them this year, but that's not the only Civic Association that I owe a letter to. But I certainly, it's very important that you're, that all residents are heard and listened to, and we're committed to continuing that work. So, Ms. Carvey.
Yeah, thank you. I'll bring up a different topic, but I do want to first really thank everybody for the effort, for the Green Valley Civic Association for coming forward with their concerns, for Ms. Crystal and I think you, Mr. Di Feranti, jumping on it for us. I mean, I think we were all pretty concerned and going to staff. And it just, I think, shows, you know, when you talk about systemic, I mean, it's just, it's just people, the way we look at things. I don't think there was any malice going on. It was just sort of oversight that, you know, in retrospect, oversight shouldn't have been, should not have been made. And I really appreciate everybody doing, including staff, getting, I think the supplemental report is dated the 12th, and I think we got it in the early wee hours of this morning, perhaps. So I really appreciate staff jumping on it and working it through, and anyway, all the work that's been done. I think we are a community of goodwill. We make mistakes sometimes, and we sometimes just need to redouble our efforts. So thank you for that. And so then I'd like to get back to sort of something just more mundane, I guess, which is the implementation guide. I wonder if staff might talk just a little bit about the implementation guide, and I will, and what that's going to be, how that's going to sort of work and fit with this. I just think that's always a useful discussion to have, when you've got sort of the difference between policy and implementation. And I'm particularly interested in hearing about an audience development and engagement, and I will give you just a personal note. I love it when art is both, we're doing wonderful things, but the engagement often it's got, it's whimsical and fun. And some years ago, we did that, there was the civic sign with the letters, and you put the I in civic, and people would stand there and be the letter I. For whatever reason, I loved that. It felt engaging and whimsical and fun, and part of, part of, I think, sort of the feeling you're probably working on. So if you'd like to just address that issue in general, and a little bit how the implementation guide will work and fit with this. I don't know which staff member that's for, I'm sorry.
Might be Ms. Adams, but-
I think Angela.
I can speak to that. First of all, I'll discuss the implementation guide. So that, you know, in our 2004 plan, those actionable items were actually included in that plan. This time around, we were advised, on good advice, to separate those action items out into this separate implementation guide. And that is because it's going to allow us more flexibility to update that, because it will be recommended to the manager by the Public Art Committee. That guide discusses how we work with other county departments, as well as community groups, bids, and partnerships. It also has a matrix in the back, that's a, it will have a matrix in the back that's a project matrix. So it'll have potential projects that are identified through the CIP and other county planning processes that are potentials for, potential for public art. So that's something that we'll want to keep fresh and updated, aligning with our annual projects plan over the years. So that's why we've pulled all that action information out into the implementation guide. And it also has a process timeline that takes projects from the, kind of the very beginning to the end, which I believe culminates in audience development and engagement, actually, which is something that we really wanted to highlight in this plan, because it's really important for us to not only commission work and put it out there, but keep it fresh in people's minds. We kind of learned through our survey process in the beginning that a lot of community members aren't aware of all the projects that we have out there. So this is something we seek to continue to work on going forward. We have done this in the past. We did a wonderful series years ago that my colleague Deirdre curated called Yoga Inspired by Sculpture, where we had a artist and yoga instructor go to different works of public art in the county and do yoga poses inspired by the sculptures. We've done the county wandering and walking tours with artist Graham Correll Allen. One in particular was in Roslyn that really highlighted all the public art in Roslyn. So we want to continue to do interpretive work like that as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerriger. I know we'll have other questions. We'll go to Mr. Karantonis. Unless you're on this one, Ms. Crystal, go to Mr. Karantonis first. I know there is some questions that may be related to the implementation plan that I'll have as well, but first, Mr. Karantonis.
Yeah, actually, my question is related to the implementation. So I'm really excited to see the equity element being very present and very, you know, driving the thinking behind the plan update. So my question is the following, and I believe that was also a question during the planning commission discussion. So when bigger developers, bigger, bigger projects are contributing to our, to the public benefit, you know, for the public art, how do we transfer a fair part of this benefit to the areas in Arlington that are less served and, you know, that are lagging behind?
I think that's a question also, I'm not sure, Ms. Kerriger, Ms. Adams, this is related to a question that we received 8:25 last night, and also from Mr. Witt, and also the leadership of the NAACP. But first, give staff an opportunity, and then we'll come to you, Ms. Crystal.
Yes, so the way we fund public art in Arlington has a long history that's been tied to the development community. We were one of the early programs to start asking developers to help fund public art as a community benefit. This has been seen as a mitigation for development, not unlike utility undergrounding, transportation demand management, green building, and affordable housing. So we are obligated to direct those funds to the area immediately surrounding, really within the quarter-mile radius. We use that sort of metro area calculation for those funds. And so we have aggregated in lieu contributions. We also encourage developers to make onsite projects happen, per our history, which speaks to the large preponderance of our collection. But when they want to make it in lieu cash contribution, we earmark it for that area. And for the most part, those are all, also earmarked for upcoming projects that are represented in the CIP or in our projects plan. If we choose to look to other mechanisms to fund public art that is not in areas where there is a site plan process, i.e. outside of the Richmond Highway and outside of the RB corridor, we're going to look, have to look for other tools. So it's our understanding that this would be addressed in the implementation guide, and we look forward to working with you and citizens and whomever to come up with ways in which we can fund public art more robustly in areas that fall outside of these metro corridors.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Very helpful. Did you want to follow up?
Just to clarify, so this is an issue that we will be discussing when we update the policy part of this. Right. Okay.
Got it. So there will be follow-up. We'll go to Ms. Crystal, and I know we have Mr. Dorsey as well. Go ahead.
I just think it's so important to put as fine and clear a point on this as possible, because this actually doesn't just apply to public art, and I think it's a source, for me, anyway, been source of a frustration around transportation contributions, for example. And so this comes up as a resident desire, it's come up for me as a board member desire, to say, when you make offsite contributions, cannot, why can't we use those to enrich the rest of the community? And so I think what I, I think Ms. Adams put very well is, we can talk about other ways to fund as a community, right, with our capital dollars, but I just don't want to leave the point with the impression that somehow we can revisit this idea of using developer contributions for an entirely separate corridor in Arlington County as part of the implementation. You know, I don't think we can put it in clearer terms. We legally cannot. That is not consistent with the framework of site plan development that we do in Arlington County. That said, I think that we, one of the ways, I have come to think, anyway, about the sort of benefits of development, so to speak, are that you can realize onsite benefits, which are, as Ms. Adams put well, and I think our attorney would note too, maybe, is our mitigants, right, to the consequences on the immediate surrounding geography of a given site. But of course, they also bring revenue benefits for us as a community, and that, I think, has been a priority, not only with regard to public art, but with regard to transportation or tree canopy or anything else, is that we try to use the revenue from, associated with growth, which is to say the general fund revenue that comes in from a higher property taxes, or property tax revenue on these projects, to fund projects throughout the community. So what I really appreciated about this public art plan, and I think we'll see more of this in the implementation plan, is this kind of opportunism, because you may not see large commercial development in every corner of the county, but you certainly see development of public facilities in every corner of the county. And so the opportunity to use our capital, our own capital dollars, our own tax revenue, to ensure that art is considered as part of redevelopment of everything from, you know, art stations to parks, right? So I think there is a really fertile ground for exploration, but I just didn't, I didn't want us to leave with any doubt on anyone's mind. We literally cannot take money from a project and say Roslyn, and put it towards something on another corner of the county. We have to do that through our general fund dollars instead.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. I'll go to Mr. Dorsey. I think there may be a question for our attorney at some point in here, but go ahead.
Yeah, and that's exactly where I want to go, because, you know, I think the way in which we structure community benefits, there are a lot of different governing policies. So if Ms. Chork, Ms. Chork can speak directly to the whole idea of, under what conditions can contributions as part of the 4.1 process be used in an area not exactly proximate to the development, that would be helpful for my line of questioning here.
You have to establish some sort of nexus between the development and the impact of that development on, I guess, I'd call it, the benefiting area. And, you know, the statement by Ms. Angelo is correct, or Ms. Adams, I'm sorry, is correct, that it is a mitigating kind of analysis, and the notable exception to that is the authority that we specifically got for affordable housing, where that could be used in other parts of the county. But that specific authority is how we establish that. That is the exception that proves the rule. So for everything else, we do have to create that nexus or find that nexus before we can use the money.
So the nexus, and just to get at that, is there a specific nexus test that's established in code, or it's something that's established locally that you ultimately need to be able to defend against any claims that you're not following the nexus test?
It's really a factual analysis. It's going to depend on a case-by-case basis, but, you know, it would be something that we would discuss with the developer, because, you know, they could probably tell us some of their views as to why this does or doesn't impact. I'm not saying that we would take them at their word, but it would be that kind of a discussion, where you'd measure all the facts against each other.
And I would just love to hear your thoughts on the argument that for any particular level of density that allows 4.1 development, any of our development corridors, those decisions are made by the community at large, and not just the specific geographic area proximate. And when it comes to mitigating the impacts of development that the community at large has allowed, that you could apply a benefit such as a public arts contribution anywhere within the community?
I mean, that would just basically swallow up the entire concept of mitigation and how we do development in the county. It is supposed to be a negotiation between us and the developer, where we try to mitigate the effects of development by getting some community benefits and applying it to that area to mitigate. I mean, if you say that you have to mitigate countywide, then, you know, that whole analysis just kind of gets diluted.
Not mitigate, but public art. So it's the notion that, I know that we've applied public art as a mitigation. Is there another way that you could interpret public art? Not as a mitigant, but just as a broad community benefit?
The context of community benefit is that we get community benefit in order to mitigate the effects of development.
But you could negotiate something else.
The construct around how we do development is to mitigate, and I suppose anyone can voluntarily say that they want to do whatever, but in order to hold the developer to their promises, the legal construct is about mitigation, not-
Understood. So I think that's what I'm getting at. We've had certain cases where the developer has exceeded the community mitigation public art contribution of $75,000, and they've done more. There's nothing to prevent a developer from doing more and allowing that to be applied anywhere within Arlington County.
They could choose to do so voluntarily. Again, I think that puts the board in a position of being very careful in, I suppose, how am I going to put this? If they give you a larger contribution than is needed to mitigate the effects of development, you can't enforce that as part of the site plan process. And so it kind of muddies the water, but yes, they can voluntarily give you anything.
Okay. Thanks.
So I appreciate the questions. I was going to approach it in a slightly different way, and I think the questions start with Ms. Adams, and perhaps a reminder as to our funding. There's the Public Art Fund, which is provided through the 4.1 process, which I, my impression, it is by far the bulk of funding for public art that we provide. Can you speak to any other sources? So it's legally permissible, we could appropriate from our general fund resources towards the public art? And I wonder if you could just- And I wonder if you could just describe that, because I think the question here, that's sort of what I want to think about as we try to address making sure that we equitably provide funding and invest in communities that have, that are underserved by pure development-related funding. So Ms. Adams, can you tell us a little bit about other sources? Is the development contribution in 4.1, is that 80%, 90%? Is that almost all? Can you tell us other sources of funding that we might have provided or have the option to provide?
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe I'll take a case in point, just to provide some specific context for this. If we look at the Green Valley Town Square, the John Robinson Jr. Town Square, that came forward as a project through the, sorry, through the community...
The CIP.
Why am I blocking? Yes. Well, actually, through the CIP, yes. And so it received funding from various sources and within the county. And then we also earmarked a developer project that was nearby for the town square. In addition, we wrote an NEA, our town grant. We actually wrote it twice. First time we wrote it, we did not propose Walter Hood, the artist. The second time we wrote it, we proposed Walter Hood, and we received the money. So we were diligent in grant funding, grant writing for that project, and then in combining various sources from the county, capital sources, as well as developer funding. So this is a pretty good example of how we leverage various pots of funding to make a real impactful public art statement. In this case, Mr. Hood is not just designing a work of art. He designed the entire, the entire facility, the entire town square, and he is, you know, considered one of the very top designers in the world. So we worked hard to get the very best for Green Valley in this project, including writing, spending many weekends writing two NEA grants to help fund the project.
Thank you for that and the specific context. For my part in the implementation framework, I'll be very interested in seeing if it's possible to effectuate some of the goal raised by Mr. Witt in the email last night, which is a, with respect to our own funding, I understand that we have the flexibility to invest in areas that is, if the funding is not provided by 4.1. And so there's a desire for some measurable targets there, and I'll be interested in following up on that. I did want to just, and I guess for our attorney, with respect to those funds that are not generated by 4.1, that is, we have flexibility to structure those funds to invest in areas where we have had less development. Is that a fair description?
Yes. If it's not related to the 4.1, you have full discretion to use it in whatever policy, you know, you make.
Great. That's helpful, and so that will be of interest. I don't want to, I think that that is related to the questions raised in the email we received last night, seeking to be fully responding to that. I will also note one point. This issue came up, and we had considered it in the planning commission. And I think there, Ms. Crystal, your point about, we used a word, authority, that is helpful but not as explicit as what you made, which is, with respect to 4.1 contributions, just confirming, we, there has to be a nexus, and nexus is required. It is a fact-based analysis, but I also think that it comes in part from case law, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if that's correct, Ms. Corr.
It does. I don't think there's any specifically related to public art, though.
Got it. Yes, yes. Got it. So we take seriously those concerns and suggestions. We turn to the implementation process to see how we can address the underlying issue there. I did see Ms. Quinana come on briefly. It's been a good 20 minutes since then, but I wanted, sometimes when people pop up on the screen, that's because they want to share a thought and want to give that opportunity, but there's no burning necessity. I think with that, I think we have sought to address the substance and the concerns raised yesterday, both by Mr. Witt and the NAACP's leadership. And Mr. Witt brings specific experience that is relevant as a curator and makes important points. I want to pursue them personally, and I think there might be interest on the board in doing so. The right venue for doing that, in my view, is through the implementation framework, and I want to do so robustly and follow up. But to you, Ms. Crystal.
Thanks. I did want to talk just for a minute about sort of this question of how will we measure? Because I do think that matters, right? The idea that we're hearing from the community is, right, the true diversity of geography and in location of how public art is doing its thing of enriching the community can't sort of just be left up to chance, right? We really, the community would like to be able to frankly hold us, this board, right, this staff accountable for saying, you know, that we don't intend public art to be something that just happens in commercial corridors. A similar piece, too, and I think this is an opportunity to bring in another point I wanted to make, and one that I know the planning commission, based on its letters, also kind of turned over and thought a lot about, I suspect the Arts Commission did too, which is this sense of, you know, ensuring that there is a real diversity of artists, diversity of backgrounds, when possible, you know, BIPOC artists from within our own community, the sense that, you know, these public art projects are career-making sometimes, remunerative. It's really important that those opportunities be opportunities to lift up artists of color. And one of the things I know our staff has said, if not today, then at least in previous conversations with me, this goal of having a diversity of artists, not just on social practice projects, right? This is something that, a phenomenon that our staff could, or Ms. Quinana could probably speak better to than I could, but this happens sometimes in the arts world writ large, right? This notion that you have BIPOC artists when it's time to make a piece of art about civil rights, but not when it's time to just sort of welcome in an open-ended creativity way. And so I know this is the intent of the Public Art Master Plan, is to really focus on the greater diversity of artists. I know it's the intent of the Public Art Master Plan to really focus on a diversity of location countywide. And so I think one of the things we've heard is, okay, well, so how do we measure that, right? How can people hold us accountable? Obviously, public art is, you know, maybe opportunistic is too negative of a word, but has to kind of seize opportunities as they come up. It's not necessarily quite as intentional about our own decisions, for example, of where we're going to locate a park. But, so it can be hard maybe to come up with quantitative metrics. But, so this idea, anyway, that's a little bit of a roundabout way of saying, you know, when we have these values like diversity of artists or diversity of locations, how will we measure this? How can we track this? What could we expect to see in the implementation plan? You know, if not a literal quantitative tracking, then how can the community follow along and, like I said, hold us all accountable for making sure those goals are met over time? I think that's a question to put to staff, because I know it's one you've thought about as well.
Angela, do you want to speak to that, or would you like me to speak to that?
I think you should, and maybe we should invite Todd in as well.
I think inviting Todd in would be a good idea. I will say that in the art world writ large, they're also wrestling with this problem. And I'll just make the comment that public art, like many, you know, the arts market is dominated by white men because they are the ones that have been in that pipeline for a long time, and that we have ways of helping along that pipeline, to diversify that pipeline with many of the projects we do. And you see that in Arlington County with some of our mural projects, and as training and as opportunities for artists to grow in the field of public art, because public art does involve, you know, a lot of skill. And of course, we want people with experience when we're talking about large sums of money. And so we want to help that process along through our public art work plan annually, and we do that. But I'm going to let Todd speak broadly about the arts field.
So it's Todd there, maybe perhaps on mute.
I'm here.
There you go. Thank you for joining us. Go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. What a fascinating discussion, and I, I think the line of conversation and questioning is so sharp. I've always told the public art team, even though this has been a long process, you've benefited, the county has benefited greatly from the thoughtfulness from all sides that have fed into this process. And the questions we're receiving from the county board this morning are just further indication that these are not just questions for Arlington that you're asking. These are questions that every community is asking right now and trying to work through and solve. So it's just an exciting conversation. In regard to the particular question about artist development, selection, recruitment, the specific question was, what kind of, what kind of evaluative metrics might emerge? And I will be honest, I don't know right now of a lot of good models for that in terms of metrics, at least off the top of my head. But what I do know, along the lines of what Mrs. Isabel Stark was saying, is I think we do know that there are a lot of, and there are a lot of ideas we can explore about ways in which a broader range of artists can have access to opportunities. One of them, as Michelle said, is laddering opportunities, looking to see if, and, you know, looking each year to see if you are offering public art opportunities at a variety of budget, budget levels, a variety of media and approaches that allow for a wider variety of artists to actually apply and be successful. So not, not having unintentional barriers to participation simply by the way you scope projects. So that's, that's one thing. Secondly, another broad range of ideas involves providing support to artists in ways that might help them develop skills while they're working on a project. That can mean, for example, things like assistance in identifying or working with fabricators if they don't already have those kinds of networks in their own kind of, in their own kind of practice. All of these things, however, point to something else which is happening in the public art field, which is that these are very staff-intensive efforts. To achieve these outcomes that you're talking about require more investment in the development of projects, the management of projects, the curation of projects, and it's typically gone into, and I'm speaking generally here, not just about Arlington, into, into public art management. So I think what we're learning about how, about the steps that should be and can be taken to bring more artists, more diverse artists into the flow of public artwork, mean that we, we need to invest more resources in the steps that are necessary to bring them in, both through the conceptualization of projects and the support of artists who are, who are doing the work.
Thank you. And I believe it's Mr. Bressi. Do I have that pronunciation correct?
Yes. I'm Todd Bressi. I'm the lead consultant on this, who's been working with the team on this project.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and my apologies for not sort of teasing that out at the first. Really appreciate your comments, your work with Ms. Adams, Mrs. Isabel Stark, and Ms. Carragher. I mean, I do want to move to a motion, but let's first get Mr. Dorsey.
They can wait for a motion.
Okay. So, Ms. Crystal, as we move to a motion, this is, just as a note, that doesn't mean we're leaving this topic that we just discussed. It's just, we'd like to get a motion on the table so we can have further discussion. Thank you.
Indeed. I move that we adopt the resolution in Attachment A to update the Public Art Master Plan, which is shown in Attachment Two of the Board Report, with the revisions outlined in Attachment Three. And I want to clarify for the record that those revisions incorporate, the revisions included all the way up to the supplemental report dated November 12, 2021.
Made and seconded. That's up to and including that supplemental report. And now we'll go to discussion. Did you want to speak to it first and then...
I can hold for closing comments. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to revisit this, this idea of diversity and equity and benchmarking a little bit, and I want to just preface this by saying, I know everyone's not only heart is in the right place, that they will put their minds and talents behind it as well, but there are a couple of observations that I would like to make that also include a couple of questions. I love to hear the talk about, really, it's the pipeline of artists that we need to focus on, and I appreciate that when it comes to evaluation metrics, that's only one piece of the puzzle. But as it relates to that pipeline, I want to make sure that we realize that there are things that we can be doing perhaps differently right now, and it's even in how we frame who we work with. I appreciate that we always want to get people who have experience and expertise, but at the same time, if we don't create opportunities for people to get experience and expertise, we are part of the problem. And so to that extent, are we considering prioritizing artists who are able to bring apprentices to the table who may represent underrepresented communities in the arts world? Are we thinking about providing proactively county trainings, just as we do for small business contracting, for people who have historically been excluded, so that they can develop the experience with project management and, and the like? So in other words, I get that we all understand that this is a problem, and I get that we have a desire to think about metrics with implementation, but fundamentally, are we working to incorporate some real policy changes that could affect the areas where we know where the outcomes are going to be influenced by?
So I'm going to let Angela speak to that, but, Mr. Dorsey, but one of the mechanisms we have is our grant program that the Arts Commission oversees, and we have actually expanded our individual artist grants in the last couple of years. And this is a wonderful opportunity to bring in artists who are interested in public art and working, so it benefits both the individual artists and the community they want to work in. And when we bring, and when artists go through the process, a competitive process, but a lower bar, as Todd Bressi was talking about, allowing these artists to come in, get experience, and be guided by the technical acumen that our staff has. That's one of the values our staff brings to the table, is this technical resource. And, and I will also go back to what Mr. Bressi said about staffing. It does take, you know, just as in any project, project management is key, and having an experienced project manager overseeing any work is key. But I really like the idea of bringing artists in through our grant program, and, and that provides kind of a training ground and a start for the less experienced artist. I will also note, I mentioned the pipeline before, the art field has been the leader in diversity, equity, inclusion, I would say, going back 15 years or more. And in that time, and it's been a hard, a hard road, but we see public artists emerging. And in fact, we can be very proud of some of the new projects that are coming to fruition, which I'll let Angela speak to, and also the broader idea of how to get that pipeline going here.
Thank you. This is Isabel Stark. Ms. Adams?
Yes, so again, I'm going to provide two examples, just because I think it is, helps everyone understand what's already happening, and will help you provide guidance to us if you'd like to see something different. But as Michelle mentioned, the Grants Program is one where we are able to find local artists and encourage them to promote their ideas for their community often. And a case in point was in Green Valley, where we worked with Portia Clark and Darlene Robinson, who wanted to help support the local artist Romeo Taylor to commission murals for Green Valley. And this came out of interest in making more art happen when the community was engaged in working with Walter Hood, who is, of course, a very well-known African-American artist and landscape architect, but they wanted to promote their own talent. So we worked... So we worked on many occasions to meet with Mr. Taylor, gave him technical advice as to what materials would sustain best in our climate. And we also helped him prepare the grant, which he was successful in receiving. We also worked most recently with the Langston Boulevard Alliance, who of course is very interested in commissioning murals on their own. We provided a list of artists, specifically African-American artists, to create a mural to honor the renaming of Langston Boulevard. And we helped them select Kalik Crosby, who is a well-known DC artist. We also built into the budget, which Arlington Economic Development helped to fund through a sponsorship of the entire event. We built into the budget money for an apprentice. We had originally hoped that it would be an Arlington apprentice, but when push came to shove and it had to be completed, Mr. Crosby brought his own apprentice from DC. So we do support these efforts, and we will certainly continue to do more and look forward to your guidance for how to improve this work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. And those examples are helpful. I'm mindful that the, the sort of quantitative piece and the accountability that Ms. Crystal mentioned is something that we need to, to consider as we work to the implementation framework. I also think it's important to just lift up a couple of words that, you know, that are important to, to look beneath, which is that we're identified, the, the history of the word quality in art, I could see it really being fraught with the sexism and racism that, that Ms. Isabel Stark mentioned. And so we have to be mindful there. And certainly, experience is in the history of the country and Arlington not, Arlington included, experience was certainly a word that was used sometimes as a barrier to having a, a bigger, broader, better conversation. So those are just a couple of thoughts. We'll move to concluding comments if we're set, but start with Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we could talk about art all day and probably longer. I mean, what a, what a wonderful subject. One small point, and then I will make some concluding remarks, very brief. On the pipeline of artists, one of the things, and maybe I'll ask you for a brief comment, I don't want to obviously prolong us too much. What are we doing with schools? You know, I mean, obviously I've been connected with schools. Whenever I see an exhibit of student art, I am blown away by the talent and the skill and the ability there. And of course, our schools are incredibly diverse, and they're here and they're homegrown. So that, do we have, as we get this pipeline, do we start back at schools so that we get a bit of a continuum going and maybe don't have to go outside so much because we really have a lot of talent here as well?
Angela, can you take? Lovely thought. I like that one very much. So I'll just remind the board that when you all adopted the public art policy 21 years ago, we had recommended, staff had recommended the inclusion of schools in the policy. And it was removed when you all adopted the policy. Certainly, when we revisit the policy, we could revisit including schools. So currently, while we provide technical assistance to schools and matchmaking for various residency opportunities throughout the programming that Cultural Affairs does, we are not, we are not obligated to work with them, and they are not specifically in our work plan per the policy. So that would be a place to address, perhaps deepen the relationship with schools. But we certainly provide whatever assistance we're, we're asked to from schools currently.
Thank you. That's fascinating. 21 years ago, even I wasn't on the board then. That was a long time ago. So thank you. I would like to pursue that and I'll, you know, after, after we get through this and we certainly, I'm going to support this motion, of course, I support it. The discussion just strikes me, art, one of my favorite quotes is Wynton Marsalis, "Music." We haven't been talking that much about music, but he says, you know, "Music removes, washes away the dust of life." And for me, I think that applies to all art. And I would say the last few years have felt pretty dusty, as far as life goes. And we really all need art. And I think that's, we're a little bit schizophrenic as we talk because we want to involve people. Everybody should do art in some form or other. I think everybody's got some creative inside them. So we want to encourage that. That's part of what we want to do. And yet, if you're doing public art, it's then kind of up on a pedestal, and that's like different and special. So it, I think we're a little schizophrenics, and that's kind of one of the challenges I think we're, we're dealing with. So I'm supportive of this. This is, takes us a long way. Thank you again for the, the last minute late, very important work on the, some of the concerns from the Green Valley Civic Association. I do appreciate that. I'm sorry we had to get to that point, but, but we're working it through. And I love Ms. Quinana's take on it, talking about we're working with today, yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And that's, it's a, it's a big lift. We're working hard on it. And I will pursue the issue with, with the schools and that policy. As far as I'm concerned, it must have been misguided, so we'll check into that. Thank you so very much, and I'm ready to support this one. We're ready to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey. We'll turn to, to others for concluding remarks. Mr. Karantonis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, a big, big thank you to Ms. Adams and to Ms. Carragher and to the, our Culture Affairs people. This is a small, very caring group of public servants and employees. I had myself the privilege of being a part of the Public Arts Committee for many years, and I know from inside and firsthand how much they care and how much work they have invested in bringing public art in Arlington. They often say public art is something you don't see until you are actually pointed to. You don't appreciate, it's like, you know, landscape architecture, it's also one of these less seen deliveries in the public space. So I really appreciate all their, or all the work that was invested in the public art plan update. And I still believe that this, this discussion has elevated the topic significantly. Just the discussion we had here today about how do we make public art not being just the result of development, but actually being the precursor of that, being there where we have less? And what is our public obligations towards that? I perfectly understand that, you know, mitigation money is to mitigate something where, where, you know, a mitigating circumstance arises. I get that. But my point is that since this is this way, we have to find other ways to do that. Have, find other ways to bring the benefit of public art to the places in Arlington and to the communities in Arlington that have less of that and are eager to create that. Ms. Warden, really, her, her testimony literally sits with me. She said, "Public art is, tells a story of us." And I do believe that she's right. And if this is the story of us, all of us, then we, we need to expand it to everywhere where we are. And I've seen that in the Public Art Committee being a major concern, on how to do that and how, how, you know, how creative this committee has been and working with staff, creating all this network of relationships and collaborations in order to be able to do that. So I believe, and I'm looking forward to the, to the next phase, starting with this big innovation that I find in this, in this update, which is audience development and engagement. This, for me, adding this is a significant signal on how to go forward and how to create, to, to approach the implementation framework and updating our 21-year-old policy. So with that, I'm very supportive of the, of the motion, of course. And as a, as a footnote, I'm really sorry. I, I do understand how the community in Green Valley felt offended once more. It's not the first document where this happens. There's, it's not the first document where we have this, you know, where these mistakes happen. We really need to do a better job in, in avoiding these mistakes. And that's something I, I take away from, from this conversation the last two days.
Thank you, Mr. Karantonis. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very interesting, fascinating item that we had for us today. I mean, I think by and large, we're all excited about the advancement of the work in public art. Certainly, the context with which we have any public conversation these days makes, makes it so that these documents speak to different sensibilities. And I think this is moving in the right direction. Certainly, the implementation framework is really the key actionable piece where a lot of the concerns of the community ultimately will be reflected. I will note that our previous conversation about public art contributions through development certainly is an important conversation to have, but doesn't obviate the fact that we have full authority and ability to responsibly and affordably create equity within public art investments in Arlington under our own initiative. And so that, in my opinion, needs to be reflected in the implementation plan. If you look at the number of psych plan contributions over the last 20 years, if we had put in an equal amount for use elsewhere, it would have been very affordable over time. We're not talking about a ton of money. So let's not, let's not go away from what is ultimately the, the easiest solution. And then, but I, but I still want to revisit that whole 4.1 thing, because I think there's some areas where we might be limiting our thought, but that's a conversation for another day. The other piece is it relates to understanding what these plans are for our community. They are, since these are ultimately adopted by the county board, they, they matter in, in the words that they use. And if we are not careful with the words that we use, we could, as we have in this case, end up offending. And to me, it's not really that complicated on how you fix it. Some of it is for, for all of us, and I include myself in this, to shed the arrogance that we, we know what we're, that we always get it right in terms of how we say it or how we write it. And as it relates to people who can actually help you understand whether you got it right, you ask. And it's that simple. We don't wait for it to be published in your final form and for there to be a flurry of comments at the end, which furthers the hurt and the insult. As you're going throughout this formative process, we should ask. I think we're doing that when it comes to thinking about trust policies with our community. But this is just a case for all of us to grow, right? We don't have to go into our laboratory, presume that we're going to get it exactly right, as it, you know, maybe can benefit from having another set of eyes and people whose perspective are not our own. We should open ourselves to that. And that said, I don't really want to bury the leak. This is really good work. I think it's something that everybody should be proud of, from the Public Art Committee, staff, and everybody who's been involved with it. It's a good product, and we should feel good about it at the end of the day with these, these issues of improvement and growth notwithstanding, but put in their proper context. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Ms. Crystal, since you're liaison, I'm going to see if I can go first, and then you can wrap us up. This has been a long, Ms. Quinana pointed out, there's a lot of support. This has been a lengthy and thorough process. And this week in particular, grateful to Ms. Flanagan Watson, Ms. Adams, Ms. Isabel Stark, and, and our, our, Ms. Carragher and Mr. Bressi for the, the hard work. There's been a lot of work. We need to continue that work for the, for the pieces that are still out there to be done. And Mr. Dorsey said it very well, as did Mr. Karantonis, in the, in the engagement we need to do to ask, to be open, to be proximate, some people say, and to be, to, to see what we can really deeply learn from the, the draft and then the corrections which ultimately were made. You've heard multiple board members specifically say that we are eager and interested in the implementation framework and the numeric goals. I think accountability for making, improving our work to really fund artists, diverse artists in, on multiple different subjects and is part of what it takes to get to excellence. And so that implementation framework will be hugely important, and that's where we follow up and we follow through, and we need to do that. So I, I think the body of work as a whole is strong. Really pleased that we addressed many, many of the substantive issues, notwithstanding the earlier, the first draft. And then, you know, I think it's worth saying that we are miss, we have been missing much art over the past year and a half. We need to get to excellence and true excellence in, in many of our minds. And I think shared sentiment is fully valuing diversity and having our full stories here in Arlington reflected in our art and our public art and in our public deliberations, of course, as well. So with that, over to Ms. Crystal, please to support the motion.
Thank you so much. I too have really appreciated this conversation. I think it's been an excellent one, and I appreciate Cultural Affairs staff engaging so meaningfully in these final weeks and certainly at the dais today. I have one small nagging thing that I haven't sufficiently raised yet. And this is really, I think, for our manager, perhaps this will be an opportunity for us to discuss on Tuesday. We've started to get some complaints from the community about the transition to the new website and broken links. That was something that the Green Valley Civic Association raised in their letter. And I will tell you, I think they demonstrated, and I have personally experienced the use case about why broken links matter. I've spent a lot of time over the past few days trying to understand their comments, how to get them best integrated into the Cultural Affairs Division. The fact that I have consistently struggled to access the four-mile-run area plan, consistently struggled to access the, the documents from that process, as well as the Parks Master Plan, really indicates that actually it's not just a, a sort of small operational challenge, but a pretty big one in terms of how we do our work as this board and the community. So perhaps it can be a subject for discussion at the manager's report on Tuesday, that if the chair's willing, to talk a little bit about what the plan is to, to get that right going forward. Okay, so on to the, the matter at hand. You know, to maybe sort of shed, share one additional thought beyond what I think my colleagues have, have put well about words mattering. You know, I think one of the challenges I've observed with all of our comprehensive plan element updates is that we are trying to do a lot of thinking about a big theme, value area of planning within the county. And that is sometimes intention with how people actually are most likely to experience anything in the county, which is through the lens of their own neighborhood and their geographies. You would think 26 square miles, it wouldn't be that hard. But the truth of it is, we have over 50 different neighborhoods and civic associations. And I think this really played out in the, the Public Arts Master Plan. I think it would be very inaccurate to say that this was a planning process that somehow didn't concern itself with questions of racial equity and inclusion. This has been a, a, a key area of planning in terms of the, the national experts that our CAD, our Cultural Affairs Division consulted. But more importantly, it's been a key discussion among the community experts they have consulted with. I think it was really clear, you know, Commissioner Patel highlighted that. I think this has been very clear from the planning commission's reports from jump, since as, as long as they've been engaged over the past three months. That question of diversity and racial equity and how that would play out in the plan has been, been critical. And it's certainly been, been right at the heart of what the Arts Commission has done, not only with their engagement and review of the Public Arts Master Plan, but with all of their work in general. And Chair Quinana spoke about it compellingly, and I think with some humility, even just noting, you know, that, that, that they've been working on an equity statement. This has been a truly all-encompassing body of work for our Arts Commission, and I think they have really led the way for other commissioners and for us as Arlington to think about how, what it means to truly apply this lens of racial equity to our practice and our work. And so for, for me to hear our chair, Ms. Quinana, say that the Public Art Master Plan Updates aligns with the Arts Commission's equity statement, I mean, that, that is, that is not something to gloss past. That is an incredible amount of work that they've put in, and I think a, a real recommendation and support for the Public Art Master Plan. And so I think two things can be true. It can be true that a lot of attention was paid to these questions of racial equity in public art as this plan was developed. And it can be true that because these things were not looked at through a geographic or neighborhood lens, that that draft included language that was deeply hurtful to the Green Valley community and to members of our community. You know, I think this is a, a, a neighborhood that reasonably has long concerns about gentrification, about its rich history being whitewashed. And so what, what could seem as sort of a, you know, a, a simple enough or straightforward enough error in how things are characterized or aligned or don't align to, to other plans actually has serious meaning when it lands on a, a culture of disenfranchisement or disrespect. And so I do appreciate the Green Valley Civic Association bringing forward so specifically the concerns that they had. I also really appreciate our staff working, as others have talked about, burning the Midland Oil, to address as many of them as possible. And I think, as I said, And I think, as I said, that both things can be true, and that there is more work to be done in conversations and engagement with the civic association about how to prevent this type of issue in the future. And so I appreciate our chair referencing that. Let me end on just one more positive note. One of the things that I really love, that maybe has not gotten as much attention today, is this idea that I think is threaded throughout this Public Art Master Plan update, which is the role of arts in helping build communities, not only in terms of creating communities that are places that feel active and creative and interesting to those who live here or pass through, but also the role of arts in engaging our community members in community building. I will give just one example because I think with all things arts, it really helps when you have something to visualize. I know my colleagues have probably heard me talk about this before, but when it came time for our Department of Environmental Services to plan for the configuration of the new transit stations coming to the Pike, we knew they were going to have a public art element, and our public art team, Cultural Affairs Division, worked with the ES to come up with one of the most unique and creative engagements I've seen in Arlington, which was the presentation of a virtual color wheel. They asked residents of the Pike to select a color from somewhere on that wheel that reminded them of Columbia Pike and why. That, I think you can link to it. Broken Links, notwithstanding, that color wheel is still excellent, and it is, I think, just one of the most meaningful examples of community engagement. It's asking people what matters for them about the Pike, and it's taken what could be seen as a very dry or difficult to access, yet very important question about the future of transit on the Pike, and made it accessible to people in a way that shows the meaning, the role of arts and the meaning they make of their community and its future. So I almost feel like we should turn to Ms. Quinana again because I don't think any of us could say it as well as she did, but the notion of the attention paid here to community past, present, and future was so meaningful. And it is that attention that makes me very pleased and proud to support this plan today.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Thank you, Ms. Quinana, for that powerful initial and ongoing insight and initial today. We had a full conversation, even as there are many parts of this plan that were, that we haven't talked about, that were discussed. But the question is on Ms. Crystal's motion in support of the Public Arts Master Plan revision. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, 5-0. We will go on. Thanks so much to staff for the work of the last 72 hours and for the ongoing work, which we referenced in our comments. We'll go on to the next item. Madam Clerk, would you call the next item on our agenda?
Item number 31, is consideration of amendments to the Arlington County zoning ordinance, Article 7, 8, 11, 12, and 18, to permit a wider range of non-residential uses within the Columbia Pike Special Revitalization District and the Columbia Pike Neighborhood Special Revitalization District.
Over to the manager for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Making the presentation today is Ebony Dumas. She'll be assisted by Nick Rogers, and we have other stuff from, other staff from CPHD and AD available, sister. So over to you, Ms. Dumas.
Thank you and good morning. My name is Ebony Dumas, and I'm an associate planner with Arlington County's Planning Division and the project manager for this study. Today, I'll begin by providing some background and context for the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code Ground Story uses study and the resulting recommendations. I'll then highlight some results of our community engagement efforts before we introduce the staff recommendations, including some that have been, that have evolved since this item was briefly discussed here as a request to advertise last month. This study is a subcomponent of a broader body of work focused on the Columbia Pike corridor. In 2002, the Columbia Pike Initiative, a revitalization plan, was adopted by the county board. This plan paved the way for the adoption of the Columbia Pike Form-Based Codes, which holds the use tables that this study focuses on. In 2019, the Columbia Pike Commercial Market Study was produced by consultants and the Arlington Economic Development Team and presented to the county board. This group discussed three key recommendations to enhance the Pike's retail environment, and the second recommendation, increasing use flexibility through zoning and land use recommendations, was identified as the most efficient and impactful step to move this work forward and permit a wider range of uses. Many of the uses in today's staff recommendations are currently permitted already in the existing Form-Based Code Ground Story Use Table. However, many of them are permitted via a special exception use permit. While some regional and national operators have been successful in Form-Based Code developments, staff and county leadership have also heard from small businesses and local operators who sometimes have found the use permit requirement to act as an additional level of uncertainty and at times a deterrent from operating a business on the Pike. In addition to staff's review of the existing Form-Based Code Ground Story Use Table, the study also identifies a retail, identifies retail equivalent uses as defined in the Arlington County Retail Plan. So as this study is the result of Columbia Pike and Form-Based Code specific work, the scope is therefore limited to the commercial and neighborhoods Form-Based Code Special Revitalization districts. The corridor shown on this map sees Washington Boulevard as the major intersection on the eastern end of the districts and Four Mile Run Drive, and then the county line at the western end of the districts. One major relevant regulation here is that commercial Form-Based Code developments generally require commercial uses on the ground story of new developments, and the neighborhoods' Form-Based Code developments do not require commercial uses, but they are permitted on the ground story when fronting Columbia Pike. Our community engagement activities began in March of this year and continued through most of the summer. Additionally, since the RTA was adopted by the county board last month, we've continued to share meeting materials, links, and invitations to public meetings. Thus far, we've met with eight non-county-appointed groups, even as recently as earlier this month, and stood up an online feedback opportunity that received 129 responses. Some key takeaways include, there is a lot of support to update the Form-Based Code use tables and considered adding new uses, and most people that we engaged with agree that the existing use table overutilizes use permits and more uses should be by right. We also heard the perspective that ground story retail on Columbia Pike experiences a lot of vacancies and turnover, and that permitting a wider range of uses will create a better ecosystem for retail to thrive. Some commercial stakeholders and community members also felt the study was a bit too limited, and we should depart from the existing use table format and instead create a small list of prohibited uses. However, staff reviewed this recommendation and found that departing from the use table format would entail a major overhaul of the zoning ordinance and was also not necessary to achieve the study's intent of increasing use flexibility on Columbia Pike. So this is a brief introduction to the recommendations. On the left, we see a list of areas that our recommendations touch. Each recommendation requires a rather technical approach to amending not only the Form-Based Code, but also the neighborhoods' Form-Based Code and multiple articles within the zoning ordinance as displayed in the right column. However, all proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance are directly in service of amending the Form-Based Code use tables. Here we have an overview of all use recommendations that were heard at last month's request to advertise. This morning, we're looking forward to sharing how staff has refined the recommendations since October 16th. But first, we'll look at the use category of office, and this includes a few different types of office uses. Our recommendation is that they all be permitted by right. For example, today, the Form-Based Code use table prohibits what's called business and office, business and professional offices, and so that could be coworking space or nonprofit office, and our recommendation would allow these uses and all office uses by right. There is no change from last month to this month for office uses. Currently, animal boarding activities fall in the term kennel in the zoning ordinance, and they are only permitted in industrial zones. However, we are introducing a more contemporary term, animal boarding, to be permitted by right with the following use standards. All activity must be conducted inside, and 24-hour supervision must be employed. Adding the term animal boarding to the zoning ordinance would not eliminate the term kennel, and therefore businesses operating as kennels will not be impacted. There is also no change from last month to this month for animal boarding. Manufacturing artisan beverage, that would be a brewery or distillery type of operation. Artisan workshop that could operate as, for example, an artisan-level furniture workshop with classes or something, you know, sometimes it's called a maker's space. At last month's board meeting, the recommendation was to keep the option of use permit or by right with the three listed use standards. Today, however, we are presenting a refined recommendation of permitting these two uses as by right with the remaining two listed use standards. All production activities must take place inside the building, and a minimum of 5% GFA must be retail, which helps continue our recommendations align with the vision of Columbia Pike as a main street. As you can see in more detail in the board report, starting at page 18, staff further engaged with community stakeholders, the planning commission, and other county division on these updates. The last two uses are shared commercial kitchens and contemporary urban agriculture uses, such as hydroponics, horticulture, et cetera. The recommendation remains the same as last month. Both uses are currently prohibited, and we are recommending that they be permitted by The last proposed change would also allow commercially zoned legacy sites or properties that have not redeveloped using this optional development tool to access the Form-Based Code Ground Story Use Tables. Permitting legacy sites to access the new use tables would ensure a wider range of rent prices for business owners looking to locate on the Pike. As we heard in our community engagement sessions with the Northern Virginia Hispanic American Chamber of Commerce and the Arlington branch of the NAACP's Economic Development Working Group, sometimes we hear that people of color experience financial barriers when looking to secure a brick-and-mortar location or to expand their operations. Having a wider range of rent prices on Columbia Pike would provide some rent relief, allow newer operators to build a following, and may go a long way to include small business owners in this opportunity. So here is our timeline and key milestones for the study. As you see, we began forming today's recommendations after consulting with residents and commercial stakeholders. I'll also note that we spoke with commercial stakeholders who were Columbia Pike-specific and those who operate or have interest countywide, regionally, and in a couple of cases, also nationally. This fall, we've worked with the zoning committee of the planning commission and the full planning commission to reach our recommendations that are being considered today. So to recap, staff recommendation is to adopt the proposed zoning amendments to permit a wider range of non-residential uses within the Columbia Pike Special Revitalization districts. And before I turn it back over for discussion, I'll also add that my colleagues from the planning division, Nick Rogers and Jen Smith, in addition to Mark McCauley and Kate Payne from Arlington Economic Development, are also here available for the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dumas. We now will turn to our planning commission, I guess, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group Chair, I think, Mr. Hughes. Are you there virtually, Mr. Hughes? Mr. Hughes, Stephen Hughes, are you there? I don't know that I see. Is there another representative from the planning commission or the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group that is fine we see in our, oh, Ms. Patel, are you here to speak on this item?
Yes. So this matter came before the planning commission on November 1st, as Ms. Dumas has indicated. There was a joint meeting of ZOCO and LRPC, and there has been widespread approval of the recommended amendments. I will say that what we heard from Commissioner Hughes, since he is not here today and all the commissioners supported, is that, of course, a vital, thriving Pike is not only beneficial to those neighborhoods that are directly off the Pike, but also throughout Arlington as well. And so the planning commission did unanimously support the amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. I'm sorry, I didn't see you the first time, but thank you for your comments. We'll now turn to our public speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item?
We do. Our first speaker is Ryan Bibel. Bibel?
This is virtually. Ms., Ryan, are you there, please?
He's here.
Oh, come on up, come on up. You may want to lift, thank you for being patient as we work through the last item now. You may want to just press the button on the right if you want to pull the podium up a little closer to your, to you, and then you need to press for the red button. There you go. And then you may want to lift the overall podium, just, it's, I think, there you go.
Might be as high as it goes.
Maybe as far, some of us are not quite as tall as you, but go ahead, please.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Ryan, and I'm here on behalf of my friend and client, Jacob Hensley, owner of District Dogs, doggy daycare and grooming.
Ryan, you might just slide over.
A doggy daycare and grooming business, opening locations in Clarence and HQ2. Animal boarding is absolutely an appropriate use for Columbia Pike buildings, no matter what other uses are in a building. These businesses are soundproofed, have sophisticated HVAC systems required by building codes for constant fresh air and exhaust, and can cause no nuisance to adjacent commercial or residential spaces. However, these proposed tax amendments regarding animal uses have been advertised as only affecting Columbia Pike properties, when in fact they will impact all commercial mixed-use and industrial property owners throughout the county and in a negative way. It's one thing to add allowable use types to Columbia Pike. It's another thing to remove and restrict currently allowable businesses everywhere else, and furthermore, doing this under an advertisement is only for Columbia Pike. Right now, the only places dog service businesses can, businesses can have four more dogs in the building during a night or in industrial zones. This is already a problem, and according to zoning staff, the county attorney, and the BCA, industrial zones are the only places the county board wants these businesses to be. They all said this restriction is county board policy, and it's up to the county board to fix it. If these proposed tax amendments are adopted as drafted, businesses serving dogs during the night, whether it be in animal hospital, vet, or doggy daycare, are no longer even allowed in industrial zones. Dog boarding will no longer be allowed in industrial zones. Dog boarding is completely use-not-permitted now with these draft amendments. This new animal boarding is being written and is not permitted anywhere in commercial or industrial zones. So existing businesses will become non-conforming uses, and no new dog service businesses that might have more than three dogs overnight can go anywhere in the county except Columbia Pike. No businesses take care of dogs overnight for free. They all do it for a fee, so they would all now be this prohibited everywhere animal boarding use based on its drafted definition. Further, the kennel use is being added to the use table as a non-permitted use in commercial mixed-use zones, which is in no way related to allowing more uses in Columbia Pike. Businesses, residents, and the county are getting crushed by this apparent county board policy to only allow dogs overnight in industrial zones, and these tax amendments will further restrict much-needed services to the many dog-owning residents of Arlington County, almost none of which live near industrial zones and many of which don't own transportation. And many of the people who need overnight care for their dogs, either on the regular, like first responders and hospital staff, or periodically, like all other residents, won't be able to get in Arlington County because of the almost county-wide ban on this business type. Was my time or two minutes?
No, you got 15, 17 seconds if you want to add, for sure. Sorry, there's a, and we'll put.
Oh, sorry, I thought I had three minutes.
Yeah, I think we did set for three. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Frankly, I don't believe this is the county board's policy, and I believe it's a misinterpretation of zoning ordinance. But either way, whether it's county board policy or a misinterpreted zoning ordinance, it should be rectified, and now is the time, especially before these tax amendments could go through, making zoning administration understanding of dog-related businesses even more of an unclear mess and causing more tax to be unwound, and further restricting economic progress and withholding services to the over 50,000 dog owners and residents in Arlington County.
Thank you.
I must have mistimed myself.
No, no, no.
I thought I was good for three.
You're good.
You were good.
You're good. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Bibel. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Pryor, followed by Keith Fred.
Ms. Pryor, just before you start, Mr. Bibel, we will, when we get to consideration of your, of all the comments, we'll take up the question that you raised. So go ahead, Ms. Pryor.
Good morning. My name is Steph Pryor, a resident of Columbia Pike and a long-term member of the Form-Based Code as the Penrose Neighborhood Representative. I ask you to vote for these amendments enthusiastically, as it has many years of requests and push for flexibility, and these changes will help us to work with existing businesses and industries in very specific areas. In the months to come, I also ask you and staff to consider the combination flexibility to continue Columbia Pike as a vibrant to continue Columbia Pike as a vibrant destination. In Denver, they have wine, weed, painting, and pottery classes in the same space. Wine, bar. Weed, agricultural, retail, medical, depending upon your latest definition. And you also have painting, which is gallery. The pottery could be industrial artisan. Each one of these separately is okay along Columbia Pike. You put them together, not so much. This is the flexibility I keep pushing. So provide speedy staff variance approvals for very short-term turnaround. Don't do the two, six months, or a year-long to go through the site plan with additional final alternatives via Columbia Pike, excuse me, via county board approval. It's a very lengthy, complicated process. A lot of small business owners are just trying to get going. So to recap, vote yes to approve the amendments as is. I'm a dog owner. All of our stuff is... I've been pushing for the dog stuff for a long time. Help approve and create flexibilities for variations today and for businesses of tomorrow. Work on that nimble process to allow and encourage new uses in our next chapter. And while I have an extra moment, I wanted to recognize the service of Ms. Maria Pete Durgan. She recently retired as our president of the Penrose Neighborhood Association. Six years of service. Our new president, Mr. Alex Sakis, is doing great. We didn't lose her. She is continuing on as treasurer, but she also served our community in many, many different ways, from census, vaccination, and other countywide efforts. When we had large events, her and/or band, the Curb Feelers, a shout-out to the Curb Feelers, played frequently. She was also highlighted in Lloyd Wolf's recent book called Transitions. So the Civic Association is hard work with many, many, many hours, not paid, unlike county board. You need flexibility, patience, resilience, knowledge, the speed... Did I mention patience? So a big thank you to Ms. Pete Durgan for her six years of service as Penrose Neighborhood Association President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pryor, and for mentioning Ms. Durgan as well. Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Keith Fred, followed by Scott Parker.
Mr. Fred, there. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. Good morning. I'm Keith Fred, a member of the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group from Barcroft. While I agree that additional types of ground store uses should be permitted in the new development along Columbia Pike, they should be limited to only those that would be beneficial to the neighborhood and not those that create any detrimental effects. Art galleries and artist spaces, for example, would bring much-needed art along the corridor, and retail salesmen should still be the priority. Instead of attempting to identify every type of business and having to readdress what is permitted or not permitted every time a new business or use is created, it would be better to have in place overall restrictions, such as bans on predatory businesses, establishments that emit noxious fumes, create high noise levels, safety issues or hazards, or any establishment not in the best interests of the community. In other words, the types of businesses allowed or not allowed should be performance-driven and not form-driven, which is why I believe the creation of the Form-Based Code was doomed to fail from the beginning, as noted by the cookie-cutter look to the Pike and by the countless amendments that have had to been made to the entire FBC over the years. Instead, implementing a performance-based code would have created better results, allowing more leeway for creativity and diversity while still maintaining the necessary restrictions. Even if the amendments before you are approved, it does not impact the main reason for the commercial space vacancies in the new developments, that is, the high cost, the high leasing cost, which the ground floor uses study has failed to address. For an example, the entire ground floor commercial space at Trafalgar Flats on Columbia Pike in South Buchanan has remained vacant since it was built over three years ago. The county can help remedy this by not allowing unleased space to lower commercial property assessments, thus removing the tax incentives for keeping commercial space vacant. It has been acknowledged that the high leasing costs at Trafalgar Flats have made the ground floor space unattractive to potential businesses. If divided into three spaces, the smallest two would require over $100,000 and $155,000 to lease. Most independent small retail business owners cannot afford this. The reason developers along the Pike have been pushing to fill their commercial spaces with large chain grocery stores is that these chains can easily afford the high leasing costs, and developers get to fill a large bulk of their retail space with a single long-term tenant. This is counterproductive to the idea of a diverse main street along Columbia Pike. Financial incentives need to be in place for property owners to lease to small, independently-owned businesses and to those businesses that would bring much-needed diversity and benefits to the neighborhoods, especially those establishments that were displaced by redevelopment. Thank you for your consideration and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Fred. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Scott Parker, followed by John Snyder.
Good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here as well in hopes that Arlington will get a little bit more fluid in some of the small businesses that are allowed. I'm what you call, might call a serial entrepreneur here in Arlington, so restaurants you may have heard of, like Barley Mac, Don Tito, Bronson Beer Hall. We have a new one called Poppy Seed Rye coming out this month, and one called Nighthawk Pizza early next year. Barber shops, we have two locations, one in Sherrlington, one in Boston, called Beer to Go Barber. Boxing gyms called Bash Boxing in Boston and also in Roslyn. And I don't think that my business, my personal business interests are very relevant at all, other than I would say that in everything we've done, we've taken over a space where our business has failed and done something a little bit more dynamic and inserted a business that really has worked. And very soon, my family will be opening a dog daycare and hopefully boarding facility here in Arlington as well. Just like Ryan was saying about, you know, his client, I think that Arlington has challenges right now in what it provides to its residents when it comes to dog boarding. Where we're getting ready to open our dog daycare and boarding facility, we've never seen a pre-opening response like we have from folks saying, "We can't wait for you to open. When are you going to open? We're getting emails, we're getting calls." But I don't know if they realize yet that we're going to be limited to only three dogs a night, and they're going to have to continue to go outside the county or into specific industrial zones to board their dogs. And so I just wanted to come here today to say that I do think there needs to be changes. If you look at other counties around us and around the country, Arlington is way more restrictive when it comes to dog boarding than so many others. And I think you have really creative entrepreneurs like Jacob from District Dogs that want to come into the area. There's another one that just opened in Boston. There's some more coming to the Columbia Pike area as well. But those businesses are going to be challenged in how they can succeed because of the fact that they can only board three dogs per night. And if we're not mistaken, I think that rule was written in 1950, so obviously, it's been quite a few years. And right now, there's just no way for a boarding facility to compete with those that are outside the county, and there's no way for people who are inside the county who really want a place to have their dogs overnight close to home, there's no way for them to do that. So they can leave their dog at daycare, they can leave their dog for grooming, they can leave it for training, but once a boarding facility has three dogs per night, which is extremely low, they'll have to look outside the county and sort of head outside the county to do that. So that's all I came here today to say, and thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Appreciate it. Our next speaker.
Our final speaker is John Snyder.
Mr. Snyder.
Good morning. My name's John Snyder. I'm chair of the Columbia Pike Partnership, the organization formerly known as CPRO. I'm here in favor of the amendments that are being proposed. This is the product of a lot of work that's been done over more than five years. Part of that, this arises out of the commercial market study, which looked at different ways that we can help promote businesses on the Pike, which is one of the reasons why we've had the whole revitalization effort, so that we have open and thriving and interesting businesses for our residents and for residents of the entire county. Two of the things that were specifically mentioned as actions out of that study are to encourage new and alternative uses and to create an environment conducive to business. That's exactly what these are intended to do with removing some of the limitations on physical use of the spaces. At the same time, we need to look out for the unintended negative consequences that can arise from that. And that's one of the reasons why this is a long and complicated document that's coming before, but it has a very simple premise, which is increased flexibility. I use as an example, we've had a great discussion earlier this morning about arts. Did you know that we already have artist studios on Columbia Pike? If you did, that's great. If you did not, that's a perfect illustration of how some of things that enter zoning are seen as problematic aren't really a problem. If this were a problem, you would know about it. You know, you would know it's there. We also have a commercial kitchen on Columbia Pike that's relatively new. That is allowed, but you have to go through a lengthy process that's very difficult, particularly for small businesses and nonprofits. So these are the things that are allowed now, in many cases, after a long regulatory process. We'd like those things to be by right. There are other things that are allowed, that are not allowed, that should be allowed because they're a good idea. In the discussion of this, which has been very meticulous and has talked to everyone, the property owners, the businesses, and the residents, including the Form-Based Code Working Group, which is made up of residents, and the Pike Presidents Group, which is the Civic Association Presidents, the one theme that has come through all along has been, we'd actually like to open it up more. So this is the time when the people who would be, you know, in some instances, asking for regulation are saying, "Please remove it. We want to make this easier because we want to make it easier to have a business on the Pike." The other work necessary to help our businesses has to continue as well. Things like support that can be offered through the Columbia Pike Partnership, through Biz Launch, trying to close the digital divide that exists for a lot of our businesses. When the pandemic hit, a lot of people started doing everything online. Some of our businesses had no online presence at all, and they still don't. And it's something that can be helpful for them. We also need to make sure that we continue the work on transit. We're going to be getting a lot of new customers coming into the Pentagon City and Crystal City area, and we want to make it as easy as possible for them, not just in commuting, for transit for commuting, but transit for businesses, so that those customers can come to the, one of the 47 awesome ethnic restaurants we have on the Pike, and to make it easier just to get around without using a car. Still, we've got to keep our eye on parking so that it is easy to use these businesses by car. That's one of the reasons why the Form-Based Code projects have, all have parking requirements in them, so that we're not creating space that it's hard for people to get to. As we push for flexibility, it's also important to note that this will be expanding, not just for those buildings that have been built under the Form-Based Code, but adjacent legacy spaces, so that everybody has the same rules, and so that those legacy spaces, which we also sometimes have trouble filling, can also be filled with a good and thriving business. So thank you very much. Thank you for all, to the staff and all the community groups that have been involved in this to date. We look forward to adoption of these amendments, and we appreciate the time that everyone's put in to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Appreciate your continued work for the Columbia Pike Partnership, formerly known as CPRO, and the partnership work. So the conversation is now with the board. I want to move fairly quickly to a motion, but I do think there's one issue that I'd like to talk about just before we do, which is the question regarding that Mr. Parker mentioned, and also, Ryan, Mr. Bebel, you mentioned with respect to dogs and dog boarding. So I guess the question would probably be for Ms. Dumas. It's whether, my understanding is that this ordinance change only applies to the Form-Based Code Columbia Pike area. Is that correct?
The change is to add animal boarding as permitted use in the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code areas to add clarity on, you know, this is only for the Pike, as it is detailed in the board report. We added the use into the commercial and misuse tables, so it's clear that animal boarding is permitted on Columbia Pike in the Form-Based Code use tables. However, it is not permitted. We are not, we did not do the research, we did not do the outreach. The study's scope was not including the commercial and other use tables.
But it's a weird... That's helpful. So we're not adding restrictions outside the Pike, but you also mentioned, I think, a text amendment and the possibility. I think there's probably some significant additional work that would be, need to be involved. I haven't seen the text amendment, but it does strike me that this might be, I was not here in 1950, this might be an area for some analysis and study to see what's possible. And I think, we'll go to the manager in a minute, but I think I'll start with Ms. Crystal.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and make sure I'm understanding. So we added animal boarding to the use table. Our zoning ordinance is, anything that is not explicitly allowed is disallowed, correct? So this is, it's not by adding a definition of animal boarding, we are rendering uses that may have existed without a definition illegal or nonconforming. Do I have that understood right?
Yes, I think so. And, you know, we did pull the use permits for all of these uses, and I'll pass it over to my colleague, Nick Rogers, to explain further the existing businesses and what non-impact that will have.
Ms. Crystal, good questions, and I appreciate that we're going here with the conversation today. Really appreciate the thoughtful comments from our two speakers who spoke to this. I think Ms. Dumas has done an excellent job of being responsive to your questions in that the companion changes that were made to the main zoning ordinance, again, as you know, the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code sections are appendices to our broader Arlington County zoning norms. Those companion changes were made to add further editorial clarity on these uses to reaffirm the status of which uses are permitted and not permitted in which, in those particular zoning districts. And it goes without saying that those edits were made in consultation and partnership with our zoning division, with Ms. Vom and her team, as well as the county attorney's office.
Okay. So if you were operating, I'm sure no one's doing this, but if you were operating animal boarding without a use permit outside of Arlington County, or outside of Columbia Pike, you were not able to get a permit for it before, and you will not be able to get a permit for it going forward? So that, so there's no change to those who wanted to have animal boarding outside of Columbia Pike?
I'll only make a slight additional clarification on your assessment, Ms. Crystal. And quite frankly, I think Mr. Parker provided a good overview of how the regulations work right now, how those, I'll colloquially call them doggy daycare uses. They're permitted as a retail use in, by right, in virtually all of our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. The dog grooming, the pet daycare, you hear me emphasizing daycare, but other than very finite locations in the county, they're industrially zoned. And as you know, we have very few of those remaining in our, on our official zoning map. The overnight boarding of dogs has a maximum cap of three dogs. And so we had presumed that there would be some interest in extending some of this work in potentially into our other commercial and mixed-use districts. We were anticipating some of this conversation today. And so it's not, there isn't a prohibition on the overnight boarding, but as Mr. Parker and others have commented, there are some maximum caps to that activity.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. I saw Mr. Karantonis, and then to Ms. Garvey.
So just to clarify, with the introduction of the class of animal boarding in the, in this work on the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code, on the amendment of Columbia Pike, somebody can open a doggy care place and, for example, have 20 dogs overnight. This limitation that otherwise exists is not anymore limiting on, for businesses that would open on Columbia Pike in this category, for this use. Is that correct?
Mr. Rogers or Ms. Dumas?
Or would we have still the cap?
Presuming the board adopted the text that's before you today, the cap would not be there for Columbia Pike. You're correct, Mr. Karantonis.
So that means that on Columbia Pike, and by introducing flexible uses in the Form-Based Code, and the commercial, the commercial use in Form-Based Code, we are creating de facto precedents that would logically, you know, invite us to review what, you know, the... what, you know, the rest of the, you know, what the status in the rest of the county would be. But this is an assumption. I mean, for now, on Columbia Pike, if somebody wants to board more animals, more than three animals, more than a three-dog night, what would immediately, would be able to do that? As far as the use permit would, you know, determine that everything is in place to be able to do that properly?
Thank you, Mr. Karantounas, for those questions for helping clarify. And Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, that, this is fascinating, because I didn't, actually, I wasn't understanding it correctly. So the three-dog night clause applies everywhere else in the county, but not in Columbia Pike if we adopt it. Is that, so you can have, I guess, unlimited dogs? So that's, that's, just checking, that's, that's the issue? That's correct?
It has to be industrial. I think maybe that's for Mr. Rogers or Ms. Dumas, that there probably are other places where, in the industrial use zones, where you could do that. But go ahead, Ms. Dumas.
Kennels would continue to be permitted where they currently are permitted. And so as you, as you state, yes, that would be in the industrial zones. However, animal boarding is a new definition and a new term that we are adding, so there is no cap, as you state. You know, there is no three-dog limit for animal boarding. And currently, the Columbia Pike Ground Story uses study is recommending to add the term "animal boarding" to the zoning ordinance as a definition, but also to the Form Base Code use table. And so where the animal boarding line is in the use table in the Form Base Code, there is a by-right recommendation.
All right, great. Well, I, you know, I'll just also just make my concluding remarks now, too, if that's okay. I know we don't even have a motion.
Or remarks, but...
I'll make remarks. I've done, anyway, I'm pleased with this. I do think this is an issue that we may want to look at elsewhere. It's not for today, but the three-dog limit per night, I mean, it's kind of a whole interesting issue, and I think probably will pop up other places as well, outside of industrial areas, that we might want to look at it. And thank you for including the agricultural, thank you for all the work. I appreciate adding the agricultural uses and the increased flexibility from the comments that we've been getting from folks. And I'm really pleased that we're going to be moving forward. It's an exciting moment for the Pike, and it continues to grow. And I suspect there'll be more modifications that we may make at some point, but I'm very pleased to support this now. And thank you so much for all the work.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey. I will just briefly sort of check, I'll put out there with, for colleagues, that the question of further work on animal boarding, possibilities in other places, this seems like something that could be worthwhile for a, sort of the flexible nimble-type review that we have, have been talking about in our planning work session a couple of months back. I'm also mindful that there may be bigger issues there, and certainly, we've all, at one point or another, lived, tried to sleep next to a barking, near a barking dog, and that, that's a challenge. But I think the substance of that to-do possibility does not prevent me from supporting this step with respect to the Columbia Pike. So we'll go to Mr. Dorsey, and then Ms. Crystal.
Just a quick substantive question before we leave this. Given the zoning ordinance's current description of a kennel as relating to dogs, I've been working under the assumption, but I wanted to confirm whether that was correct before we left it. If you had a cat kennel, that could operate right now anywhere, right?
I don't think that, well, cats or any animal other than a dog is not stated in the zoning ordinance. Then it is my understanding, since it's not stated, then it would not be permitted. And so that was also an additional reason why we thought really, you know, strategically on the definition of animal boarding, and defined it, you know, using the term "common household pet." So we're getting away from only speaking to dog owners, but, you know, cats are another, you know, common household pet that could benefit from a business model of this type.
So right now, you couldn't actually operate a cat kennel in Arlington?
Sure. I think the final determination would need to come from, you know, the zoning division. However, it is my understanding, if, and as others, your colleagues have stated this morning, if something is not explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance, then it is not allowed. And so from my current understanding, since cats or their common household pets are not explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance, then it's my understanding that it would not be allowed.
Well, that just seems to add to the, to some work and follow-up that we probably would need, need to see. I appreciate the questions, Mr. Dorsey, Ms. Crystal, and we'll go soon for a motion.
Yeah, it does seem interesting. I think for my part, I would be interested to get a sense from staff about how much work we need to go into it. The other nuance here that I'm not sure we've considered at all, and I don't want to out anybody who might be doing this underground, but when we think about the sharing economy, for example, Rover and other sites are really popular for people doing this on an informal basis, the way we see people doing Airbnb. And so this may actually be a larger body of work than we're realizing. So I would definitely be interested in seeing it. I would just want to make sure we're, as is always the case with the planning work plan, appropriately trading it off with other priorities that we may have. And I'll actually follow Ms. Garvey's lead and make, not conclusive comments since we don't have a motion, but I don't think I need to speak again while I've got the floor, and just say, really appreciate the conversation last month, which I think was very elucidating in a number of ways about how we approach trying to be more flexible and allowing these types of uses that are creative. I think we all share the same goal. And I know, you know, to have these longtime stakeholders of the Pike who've stayed engaged and tried to support businesses. And as Mr. Snyder noted, you know, when you have the types of neighbors for whom, you know, we might expect the opposition to these more creative uses coming forward and actually saying, no, 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 we want these uses. We want the Pike to be a place in Arlington County where you can try new things, as it has been for so many generations already. I think that says a lot. And just, I'm so pleased at the staff work here. I think, as we talked about last month, I think, Ms. Dumas, Mr. Rogers, you all really broke some new ground in forging new conversations with stakeholders who haven't historically been at the table, like the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, that I think are really important voices in these conversations about retail uses. So just delighted to support this body of work and hope that I'll soon be, you know, celebrating at a cidery or maybe a painting class, even if it's next door to the cidery, as Ms. Pryor noted on Columbia Pike.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Over to Mr. Karantounas. Maybe we can get a motion about this, much discussed.
I can offer the motion to, to this item, to adopt the ordinance, same move, to adopt the ordinance attached to the staff report's assignment, to this item, to amend, reenact, and recodify Arlington County zoning ordinance, Article 7, 8, 11, 12, and 18, along with Sections 3 and 6 of Appendix A, and Part 9 of Appendix B, to permit a wider range of non-residential uses within the Columbia Pike Special Revitalization District and the Columbia Pike Neighborhood Special Revitalization District as designated on the general land use plan.
Second.
And like, along with Ms. Crystal and others, I'm very supportive of that. I recognize as a wide community has worked very, very hard to get there. I especially want to commend the Form Base Code Working Group, and Ms. Pryor is here, and everybody who worked on that. I do know that a lot of thought goes into this. It actually is not only leading thought for the Columbia Pike area, but also for the entirety of the county. I believe that our retail specialists can learn a lot from these conversations, and there's really a wealth of, of community input and of interaction between commercial stakeholders and civic stakeholders that is very valuable for that. And that actually led to this, to this amendment here. I very much hope that it will work and that we will also continue to learn from all this. She mentioned wine, weed, and painting, right? As a Denver mix. I'm not so sure that this will be on the Pike, but we are actually used to have a weird mix on the Pike that makes the Pike funky and interesting and so vibrant. And we want to continue to do that. To Mr. Snyder's very appropriate remarks, number one, the work that CPRO and now the Columbia Pike Partnership has contributed to this is invaluable indeed. These are the people who are on the ground, who are working with businesses. Just last Friday, I think they had a business roundtable, small business roundtable again. So they are keeping, this organization is keeping really the community engaged and is always listening in and informing us, in this sense. But he's also very right to say that this is just the regulatory framework. There is a lot of policy that needs to still be in place with business support, with transit element being significantly improved, to reposition the Pike in Arlington County that is really changing and is really challenging. On the one side, we have the Richmond Corridor and the National Landing rapidly evolving and, you know, absorbing all the energy. On the other side, we have Palston. Columbia Pike is still the home of 45,000 people. And that's, and that's an important area to support and go forward with the flexibility that's allowed and approved here. Last but not least, to Pete Dergan, congratulations. We are very thankful for her service.
Thank you, Mr. Karantounas. I see our attorney, Ms. Core, did you have a comment you wanted to make that, as we finish and work on consideration here?
I'm actually going to defer to Mr. Rogers. I think he's alerted me to, we may have a section that was missing in the motion that should have been amended. Mr. Rogers, do you want to speak to that?
Ms. Core, thanks so much. In Mr. Karantounas's motion, he mentioned three sections of the proposed amendment in the Form Base Code, Sections 3. Bear with me, Mr. Karantounas, it's three.
6 of Appendix A and Part 9 of Appendix B.
That's, that's right. And I did not hear a mention of Section 4, which has some changes to the transparency standards, and a mention of offices as well. So I just wanted to alert the board to that section that was not explicitly mentioned in the motion.
I read the recommendation of the county manager as it is published.
Yeah. So the, thank you, Mr. Rogers and Ms. Core. So the question is, the, it's adoption of the ordinance attached to the staff report. And so we will clarify, I just want to see if someone could just check the text of the staff report quickly to make sure that Section 4, let me see if I understand, Mr. Rogers. Section 4 with respect to transparency standards also is in the attached ordinance. And Mr. Karantounas, you might be willing to amend your motion to include that additional Section 4.
I'm happy to.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, on page 25 of the staff report, we do have that mention in the ordinance of Section 4 as well.
Great. So, Mr. Rogers, then can, are you able to confirm it's just that Section 4 that is the additional piece? And now that Mr. Karantounas has been willing, I'm willing to second that amended motion that includes Section 4, and we are covered, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Karantounas. Thank you, Ms. Core, for bringing, and Mr. Rogers, for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Karantounas.
Thank you. I incorporate that in my motion. So it's Sections 3, 4, and 6 of Appendix A.
Great.
The difference.
Thank you. So just to seek to be responsive to, I do think it's the great staff work here. We were providing additional flexibility on Columbia Pike. The issues with respect to dog boarding and cat kennels, et cetera, those are issues that I do think I have an interest in. I'm mindful of the length of the planning work plan, but I'm certainly open to further discussion on that. I appreciate maybe Mr. Fusirelli or Mr. Williamson, if staff could at least loop with us on that. That would be great. So those are my concluding comments. Happy to support this. I believe, you want to go ahead, Mr. Dorsey?
Sure, I'll be brief. I just wanted to say thank you for all the work on this. It's rare that you have, as Mr. Snyder noted, people calling for decreased regulation and opportunity, but in this case, it makes total sense, given conditions that we're experiencing. And I think the staff work is a great step forward for us. It does invite some further questions. But it's thrilling when you can always support things that bring joy, I know, to all of you, and certainly joy to me. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. The question is on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Now we will turn to the, Madam Clerk, if you call the next item, please.
Item number 32, consideration of fiscal year 2022 grant agreements between the county board and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for use of Commonwealth transportation funds.
Mr. Manager, over to you for the staff report. And it looks like Mr. Emanuel may be handling that. Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Actually, Mr. Emanuel's here with me today. I think David Frye and Lynn Rivers and Pierre Holloman are going to go, I think David's going to go ahead with the presentation. So over to you, Mr. Frye.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the members of the board. I'm going to introduce the first two slides, and I'll turn it over to Lynn Rivers, the Transit Bureau Chief, to continue. This is a request to accept and approve four grant agreements between Arlington County and the Department of Rail and Transportation to fund various transit projects, two capital projects, for the purchase of 20 transit buses, to continued funding for the Transit ITS program, and also to provide funding for, operational funding for transit operations and funding assistance to hire two transit interns for, again, for transit. The grants total approximately $13.9 million, and these are annual requests that we present to the Department of Rail and Transportation, and this is for FY '22 funding assistance. Go on, next slide. And I'll turn it over to Lynn.
Thank you, David. Good morning. Good morning, board. Part of this grant is part of the purchase of 20 replacement vehicles. We had this conversation earlier in the year about the need for replacement of our oldest vehicles at this point. NABE buses, they are, have exceeded their useful life, which is 12 years. The NABE manufacturer has gone out of business, which complicates and exacerbates the situation that we're in with these vehicles. Because they're out of business, it's been hard, very difficult to get parts for them, and it is quite expensive to maintain. So therefore, with the buses being, exceeding their life, we have asked DRPT and have received a grant application, which was scored based on our request to replace the 20 buses. And our request was to replace them with light buses, which are 40-foot buses. Excuse me. Pending the approval, we are planning to actually have those buses replaced using a contractual element through Wamata, who has the very same buses that we operate here in the county. They are by New Flyer. And we also anticipate that there might be some delivery issues. However, we have been working with the manufacturer and making sure that slots do remain open for us to purchase those vehicles and get them in, get them in a timely manner. Next slide, please. So just, just a little bit of background and other things that are actually happening at the same time with replacing vehicles. We are, have a study underway as we speak with our consultant, Kim Lee Horn, that's actually looking at new technologies and infrastructure with the focus actually being on electric at this point. And so this study will actually determine what's happening in the market. We are, we understand from a practitioner's standpoint what's happening, but to have that confirmed and verified through our consultant to gather all of the lessons learned across the industry. At the same time, we are looking at arts fleet and facilities. We are, will be doing public engagement. We'll be involved in this. And this will also help to guide the... help to guide the transition that we will have. We are looking at the, the whole point of replacing our vehicles and looking at new technologies is to make sure that we are in a position to make sure that the future of transportation in Arlington remains on a steady ground. In addition to the facility, Stantec, who is our designer, is working with us in also looking at different types of fueling technologies. We're looking at the operating characteristics. And the biggest part of this as well within operations and maintenance facility is also not just looking at the vehicle, but looking at the infrastructure that will be needed as well. And we are focusing primarily on the infrastructure that will be needed to support the 15 buses that we have, are planning to look at. And this is based on what we see and what we hear from the evaluation study, which would be, which would be our next bus purchase. Our next bus order would be in 2024, with buses arriving in 2025. So this is information and background about the request that's being made for our grant approval, of which this is one. And I will turn it back over to the Board Chair, De Ferentz.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rivers and Mr. Frye, for the background. I think, just a couple of questions. I know we'll go shortly to a motion. Can you remind us as to when we would know the costs of, a little bit better, of our new bus facility with respect to being, you know, fully electric?
That is, and I'm, I'm sorry.
Being feasible, being possible to be fully serving the electric buses that we would then have. When would we know that? Is that under study? But I just don't have, I don't recall the timeframe.
We are actually in, we're at the point right now where we're working with our contractor, excuse me, our G C and our designer to determine that. And I might look to Pierre Holloman, who's working more closely with the facility to discuss that. But we are working with them right now, and I anticipate that over the next few months, we will get a better idea of what those costs might be.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman.
Yes, so we're looking to actually reach the guaranteed maximum price by the spring or summer 2022. That's when we will come to the Board with the request.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. And I just noticed the 15 is, would that be the limit to the number of electric buses that we could serve under what we would find out in the spring or the summer? Or would we be able to go numbers-wise above that?
15 buses are what's planned to be replaced. We can only ask for funding for those vehicles that are, that have exceeded their useful life or their mileage. And in our case, with regards to a CNG vehicle, 300,000 miles is considered, the useful life is complete. So 15 buses is what's already planned and what's in our CIP.
Great, thank you. Only other request I will have, and I'll risk, we had, I guess a big thank you to each of you. I'm mindful that you guys are doing quite a bit, and it's a busy and not easy time in transit, so, but I just know when we think about our climate issues, this is, that's what led me to, we did have a conversation, I just wanted to follow up. My understanding is that for the new buses, we would not add the phrase "clean natural gas." Is that a fair? I'm seeing Mr. Emanuel. I know that there are colleagues who might policy, you know, I don't think we should go back on the existing buses, but there's evidence out of Massachusetts. I think we do a better job than Massachusetts on this, but there's, you know, the number of emissions is a question. So I think that's all the questions that I have. Colleagues, thank you for your patience on this. I think I'm ready for a motion unless there are questions from others.
Just wanted to confirm we don't have any speakers or anything before we...
Oh, yes, thank you. I didn't see any earlier, but, Madam Clerk, are there speakers on this item?
No, there are not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
So, happy to make a motion, and I move that the county board accept and approve four grant agreements between the county board and the Department of Rail and Public Transportation for Use of Commonwealth Transportation Funds for projects that include the purchase of 20 heavy-duty transit buses, an agreement for an intelligent transportation system program, agreement for funding assistance for art operations, as well as an agreement to hire two transportation interns. Further, this motion authorizes the county manager to execute the appropriate documents consistent with these grant agreements, and finally to appropriate $10,105,360 into the appropriate funds to effectuate the foregoing.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion? I did have one question that came up. Ms. Crystal, go ahead.
No, I was just going to make a conclusory comment, so...
Well, so the only question, I think it's actually not my question, that's part of why, have you got a chance to talk with the Dash folks in Alexandria? Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. I know this is part of a Saturday. Ms. Rivers, I hope you and Mr. Holloman will understand the desire just to be thorough in light of the climate piece. And over to, that's from my part, that's the reasoning behind the questions, and I'm happy to support, given the extra and additional context, and I'm grateful for it. Ms. Crystal.
Thanks. I appreciate the discussion as well, and I think we're at such a strange moment because we are all so eager to be part of this vanguard of electrification. And I think, you know, the timing is challenging, right, to have to make this big purchase of our more legacy fuel-based vehicles. Although I will say, and I do think it's worth noting, right, as has been raised during the CIP, that our legacy fuel is, perhaps not clean natural gas, it's compressed natural gas, but it does go a long way in terms of particulate emissions and quality of life relative to diesel buses. I just wanted to suggest, you know, I think in this case, I feel confident about supporting this purchase because we are starting to see people return to the art system. I was telling colleagues this morning, I was really pleased to see a crowded Art 41 on my way here on a Saturday. And I think we've heard from our staff that we really, if we're going to be able to deliver the high level of service that is going to encourage people to return after the pandemic, we have to have the fleet to do it. And really, ultimately, there is little that can more serve our goal of reducing the amount of emissions and being a more climate-friendly community than inducing as many people as possible to take public transit. So although I would love to be supporting a procurement for the first wave of electric buses, I am optimistic that the Board is going to be able to do that within the next couple of years. And I'm glad to support, this one is an ongoing effort to make sure that we have people moving around in ways that reduce overall emissions and fulfill our goals as a climate-friendly community.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Ms. Garvey?
Yeah, thank you. And I presume your question to Mr. Emanuel was because art, excuse me, the Dash system has been moving to similar, they're trying to pilot in Alexandria. So I'd like to invite Mr. Emanuel, if there's any comments that you'd like to make about what you've learned from our colleagues in Alexandria. We did have three of us at NVTC the other night, had a really fascinating presentation about some of the things they're learning.
I spoke again with Jan Lambert and Don Alexandria. As you know, they're ahead of us in the sequence, as recently as yesterday. And I'll just, I didn't ask for his permission to be quoted, but I'll just, I'll try to keep it succinct. I said, you know, what's your big lesson to take away as we go down this journey? His key was that you've got to have the infrastructure there. So if we're going to go battery-electric buses, it's as much about the infrastructure to support those buses, the electric, you know, chargers and so forth, as it is the buses themselves. So the little chicken and egg, you've got to get the right bus with the right infrastructure, both have to be reliable, enable meeting performance characteristics. Of course, one of the challenges is, as people are finding when they convert to battery-electric buses, is that batteries have different performance in different weather. And so that's, it's got to, we've got to meet our needs across the full, the full year every day. So that was, that was his short takeaway. We will have many more lessons learned from them as we work with them and others. As Ms. Rivers mentioned, we're benchmarking around the country to make sure that we get the best of other people to learn. The other thing is, I would simply say is, they, they have a facility already. We're building ours. That makes it, you know, the timing is the challenge.
Yeah, thank you. No, that's very helpful. You know, at some point, we probably should have a work session, because I think a lot of people think, well, just buy electric buses, that's all you need to do. You know, just don't buy those, buy these. But of course, there's just a whole lot more involved, because it's always harder than it seems. But I'm glad we're doing the collaboration, and I was, I think the whole region was really pleased at what Alexandria was reporting on and learning on, because it's really, they're getting some important lessons for all of us, so that we don't all make the same sort of mistakes or struggles. Alexandria's kind of working it through, and we can all learn from that and hopefully do better, and maybe in the long run, actually get us there faster. Yeah, we hope. Thank you very much. But I think, you know, we'll continue to have conversations about this. It's a fascinating topic. And I'm pleased to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey, and thank you, Mr. Emanuel, for bringing those comments, as well as, the reasoning for the question about timeline was Tuesday, you know, we've got federal money coming for infrastructure, but I still would like to, I'll spend a little time between now and Tuesday thinking about, I just don't want to get to a stage where we look at the sort of facility we need in Sherlington and are right in that neighborhood, that area, and don't, don't have the resources, given that we have some one-time funding. So that was the purpose for that question. And I did talk offline, or email with Mr. Emanuel. So thank you, Ms. Garvey, for that. Mr. Karantonos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also in support of the motion. And I, with Mr. Emanuel, I think that in our conversation about the new facility, we evolved quite a lot, and we are now really focusing on electric, if I'm not mistaken. So this is another step forward. I don't believe this is the chicken or an egg question. There is no question that we have to move into electric, and for that, the first step is to create the appropriate infrastructure. So that's basically the egg that comes first. And I know that New Flyer has, is a type of bus that is already available in electric. I know that New Flyer is, like most bus manufacturers are reacting to the fact that, yes, different weather has different, I mean, can mean up to 30% or even more percent of different battery performance, but for that, there are remedies, there is engineering that can then take care of that. And on the other side, we have a lot of benefits, not only on the environment, but also on maintenance and on long-term fleet maintenance cost. So I do believe that we are really interested in seeing that coming, you know, materializing as soon as possible. Alexandria, the district are now, right now, have taken courageous decisions to go first in these, and I do believe that we, that it's our turn now to deliver on that. We have a fantastic advantage. We are the place of short routes. And that's not a small thing, in my opinion. This actually puts us in an advantageous point to adopt this technology. And by the way, Mr. Chair, I will align myself, so the decal of, you know, power with clean natural gas is really something that's not anymore a true statement, period. This needs to go away, in my opinion. Thank you.
On a relative basis, sure, we could, you know, I think that the relative point that Ms. Crystal made, but let us not take defeat from the jaws of victory. The question is on the motion. All those...
We never got a chance to actually speak.
I just, I still want the red light, because that helps me. Go ahead, Mr. Dorsey.
All right, thank you. So, appreciate the conversation about climate. I did have a question about cost. So, broken down, the per-unit price imputed from the grant is about $683K. Has there something happened in the bus market? Didn't it used to be around $550 a bus?
I think I'm going to turn that one over to Lynn or Pierre. They think have those numbers closer than I do.
Mr. Holloman? Or Ms. Rivers?
Yes. The buses actually have, that is an average number, Mr. Dorsey. And then that would be a bus that's fully, fully vetted out, meaning it has all the intelligence systems in it, has all of the fare box. The base number has been around 600,000. And so we're seeing a little bit of an increase, but I would say that that number is probably the average right now.
All right, so that's our fully outfitted bus with all of the, all of the accoutrement added to it to make it part of the Arlington system. Okay, great.
That's what I understand right now, but we still have to finish the contract in order to determine that, what that final cost is.
Terrific, terrific. And it's also my understanding that while, you know, you can't think of it like the previously-owned car market, there is actually a secondary market for buses. So there is a regular course of business. Organizations will, for whatever reason, have buses that they put onto the used car market for somebody else to buy, correct?
Yes, yes, that does happen. You know, if the bus is able to be maintained, typically you'll see other uses for those buses, like college shuttles, smaller markets that still need a bus that is reliable, but is not necessarily used in the day-to-day way that we're using it for transit.
Thank you so much. And so I'll just, that was very helpful. And just to wrap and concluding comments, I'll just say, you know, one, we want to make sure to be mindful of the earlier conversation. This facility is actually in Green Valley, so we want to make sure we note that. And then, you know, I appreciate the concerns about electrification. It's great to hear that the fiscal '24 plans are still in effect, fully endorsed, or making sure we take advantage of every opportunity, including the recently, or the soon-to-be-passed into law, infrastructure bill that's going to maybe help create some opportunities for us in outfitting our Sherlington facility, our Green Valley facility for electrification. But it's clear that we're not ready. If we're going to make a bus purchase today, we're not ready for electrification. So we just need to be very clear with our community on that. We can't do that today. It would not be responsible for all the reasons that you all identified. But then there's the real concern that I certainly understand from our advocacy community that we not make a purchase that puts us into a policy position of holding on to a retrograde technology and fueling system any longer than we absolutely have to. I totally get and understand that, and knowing that there is a secondary market is important for us, knowing that we're not going to necessarily be forced into a prudent economic decision to maintain our fleet any longer than necessary while we're thinking about electrification. So this is just necessary, because if we don't replace these buses today, then effectively what we're doing is putting services out on the street that are less reliable, and at a time where we're trying to encourage people, value of transit, I am not willing at all to sacrifice their safety, the safety of their transit, or the reliability of the service, because we're, you know, not replacing buses that fundamentally need to be replaced. So with that, happy to support the motion I made.
Thank you. So the, I appreciate the question of listing the cost of the buses, and I know that I'll be interested in use. I know the bus was crowded this morning, Ms. Crystal, and so appreciate the discussion and the motion. The question is on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. With that, I don't believe that there are many issues to come before the Board. There certainly won't be singing, but there will be wishing Mr. Dorsey a happy birthday. I mean, unless you guys pine to sing, but I don't think anybody really, really wants that. With that, Ms. Jacobs, are there any other items to come before the Board?
No, there's not.
We are adjourned until Tuesday. Thank you so much.
I was going to say, it's supposed to be possible, but what is happening?
I did it a year ago.
A year ago, yeah. It's amazing. We can only say one thing. Be better than...